Trish Bodie.
Here.
Gloria Gonzalez Delacchia.
Here.
Anna Smith.
Here.
Shadé Fashakun.
Here.
Paul Gauthier.
Here.
Christine Mauer.
Here.
Francesca Romans.
Here.
All right, board members, it is 6:16 PM and I, with a quorum of the board present, I declare our April 27th regular meeting to order. For our agenda this evening, as you know, we always start off our opening ceremony with our students. This evening, leading us in our pledge will be Cadet Second Lieutenant Matilda Chancy, who is the daughter of Ray and Noren Chancy. Matilda serves as a Leander Air Force Junior ROTC Cadet Executive Officer and the AFJROTC Physical Fitness Competitive Team Commander. Outside of school, Matilda enjoys the outdoors, especially fishing. Matilda aspires to become a pediatrician in the US Army. Well done, Cadet Second Lieutenant Chancy.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and invisible.
If you'll join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
All right, board members, continuing our focus on our students, we are moving to our next item on our agenda, our recognition, also another highlight of our evening. We have a spotlight on learning, and this evening, we will hear from Stiles Middle School.
Good evening, Dr. Gearing, members of the board. Thank you for having Stiles Middle School. And today, I get to introduce an amazing group of students and amazing educators that helped to live out our vision as a campus of inspiring future leaders through one of our courses on our campus called Lead Worthy. Joining us this evening is Ms. Snyder, who teaches the course, as well as Ms. Summer, who is one of the teachers at Aiken Elementary School, and these student representatives of this innovative course and the innovative work that they have done. So I will let them tell you all about that course.
Hello, I'm Shelby Snyder. I teach these wonderful kids leadership and coach at Stiles Middle School. When I got hired to teach leadership, I said, and I really thought, what did I not learn in school and really just wish to learn? So I like to teach these things that core teachers brush on, but don't really have the time to teach. Using the curriculum set by Capturing Kids' Hearts, I expanded these core lessons and values taught to really cater to these ever-changing students. I also wanted to teach some basic young adult skills and skills that, as an adult, we just forget to teach these kids. We learn to speak and interact with many different people. We learn to respect and have empathy for people who may not be like us. We also learn many life skills, like budgeting, resumes, and also how to fill out job application. But beyond that, my main goal was to teach these kids to always value themselves and to be the person that they see as a leader. We also get to do many different community service activities, but one very special experience this year has really, it's just shown and impacted these kids most, and that is our opportunity to join Aiken Elementary for their enrichment days. Here is Ms. Katie Summer, who organized all that is enrichment at Aiken Elementary School.
Good evening. My name is Katie Summer, and I am the ESL teacher at Aiken Elementary, and I'm also the enrichment leader there. So this year, we started a new format for our enrichment program, and at the beginning of the year, we started gathering ideas from students about what they would like to see in enrichment activities they would like. And around that same time, our instructional coaches spoke and had the idea for us to collaborate, and so we did. Ms. Snyder and I started working together to plan a way for her students to come help our students during enrichment. So our enrichment is every other Friday, and students pick a new activity every nine weeks, and it involves our whole school staff and students. So her Stiles students walk across the street, and they come into the office and put on their name tag, and they disperse to their groups, and they help. And some of the many benefits of having the Stiles leaders with us is just them offering encouragement to our students, acting as role models, sharing their expertise, supporting students to try new things, having fun. Our students seeing leaders in action, and last but not least, really, really helping the staff to do some challenging enrichment activities. It is absolutely a mutually beneficial project for both schools.
Hi, my name is Audrey Foster, and I am in eighth grade, and I take the Advanced Leadership Class. I'm one of the few lucky people that get to participate in the Aiken enrichment program, and I'm here today to talk to you about how I personally affect the kids that I hang out with almost every Friday. One of the main things I think I help with is some of the kids and their adjustment to the next grade level they're going into, especially with the fifth graders that I'm working with. I can help them get ready for middle school and help guide them into a new year. Another thing I get to do with these kids is just make memories. I have so many amazing memories from elementary school, and I can't believe that I am able to get to experience some of those with them. I'm also just there as a resource and as a friend to help the kids and teachers in any way they need, and I am now going to pass it off to my friends so that they can explain to you how the kids change us personally.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Thomas, and this is my friend Kaiser Jones, and we are both going to talk to you about how enrichment has affected us Stiles students. So first off, enrichment helps us build a connection with younger students, and it's a deeper level of connection because we understand their minds better, and not just the Aiken students, but younger kids everywhere. And this helps us in social situations when we are with them, and it helps bridge the gap between what might seem like scary for them, talking to older kids, and we become more friendly to them and helps them be able to talk to us easier. Another thing is that it helps us to remember what elementary school was like. This, these memories were really precious to us, and we might have forgotten them now that we're in eighth grade, and it's really good to go back and just, it just gives us a chance to remember our own memories and to shape their memories that they're going to have in Aiken and make, just help them have better, have a better time.
I'm Kaiser Jones, and a few more ways that we have been affected by the enrichment are making us care to the younger kids is that we can make the kids feel closer to us whenever we go over to do the fun activities with them, and it's a really useful skill to like get to know people, and it's such a blessing to like be able to go over to the kids and like have fun with them. And then another thing is it also brings us joy knowing that we have made an impact in their lives, and then by helping them and interacting with them throughout the fun activities that we have been doing with them for the past days, and it's been such a fun experience for me, especially in leadership, just getting to meet kids that I used to be the same age as them, and just knowing how like they have a smile every time we come over. And now I'm going to pass it over to Jake, who will start talking about how our leadership skills will help us now in the future.
It's fine. My name is Jake, and my friend Max and I will be explaining some of the advantages that leadership has in the real world and in school itself. Is one of the things about it is it is a very open and place, and that people can really speak their minds, and everyone is really accepting of each other. I think that is one of the biggest parts about leadership that is not always there in middle school. Another thing is that it's a mental just safe zone because we don't have a lot of work to do, so it becomes much easier to just try to relax about stuff. And you can also, you can do your work if needed, but you don't have to do your work, and that is one thing that I appreciate. And then also, we're, we always are interacting with each other. This provides us interactions, not just in classroom, but outside of classroom, and it gives, and it lets us meet different people from, because, and not everyone you normally speak with in, in school because of different groups, but this class allows us the chance to. Now we'll be passing it on to Max.
Hello, my name is Max Davis, and over the course of my years, as leadership, I've learned many skills, but some of them include just confidence in learning and teaching, including, these some of them include vocal and just like social skills. These social skills will become very important in life to the, to the sheer jungleness of it, and it sometimes feel very like, like lost in a way, and it just really helps me. And I can trace all this back to leadership when I, the moment I bestowed, decided that I would become a leadership student.
Good evening. My name is Audirah, and I'm an eighth grade Lead Worthy student at Stiles. This class introduces us to situations that we may find ourselves in, and it helps us manage things properly. We may find ourselves working with different people of all cultures and backgrounds, and Lead Worthy prepares us with important life skills for that, like knowing how to communicate, budget, and write job applications. We have learned to be better and successful people everywhere we go. Lead Worthy as a class feels more of a fun and engaging experience that helps us be more confident and prepared for the real world. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Like I said, our goal at the campus is to inspire future leaders, but I don't know that we have to go that much far in the future with this group, thanks to the work of these incredible educators, to find an innovative way to empower students to serve their community beyond just the campus. I appreciate your time, and thank you for giving us this opportunity. All right, and before we get up for our picture, if we could do a round of applause for our parents that came here and brought their kiddos, and for teachers, if y'all can go, and siblings who was here to support them, please stand up so we can applaud y'all.
It's a community effort, and we appreciate it so much. All right, board members, if we want to go get pictures?
Hello, my name is Max Davis, and over the course of my years, as leadership, I've learned many skills, but some of them include just confidence in learning and teaching, including, these some of them include vocal and just like social skills. These social skills will become very important in life to the, to the sheer jungles of it, and it sometimes feel very like, like lost in a way, and it just really helps me. And I can trace all this back to leadership when I, the moment I bestowed, decided that I would become a leadership student.
Good evening. My name is Audirah, and I'm an eighth grade Lead Worthy student at Stiles. This class introduces us to situations that we may find ourselves in, and it helps us manage things properly. We may find ourselves working with different people of all cultures and backgrounds, and Lead Worthy prepares us with important life skills for that, like knowing how to communicate, budget, and write job applications. We have learned to be better and successful people everywhere we go. Lead Worthy as a class feels more of a fun and engaging experience that helps us be more confident and prepared for the real world. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Like I said, our goal at the campus is to inspire future leaders, but I don't know that we have to go that much far in the future with this group, thanks to the work of these incredible educators, to find an innovative way to empower students to serve their community beyond just the campus. I appreciate your time, and thank you for giving us this opportunity.
All right, and before we get up for our picture, if we could do a round of applause for our parents that came here and brought their kiddos, and for teachers, if y'all can go, and siblings who was here to support them, please stand up so we can applaud y'all. It's a community effort, and we appreciate it so much. All right, board members, if we want to go get pictures? All right, board members, we'll proceed. With the rest of our recognitions, we have some videos highlighting our Administrative Professionals Week, National Library Week, the Heller Awards for Young Artists, and the Art on the Bus, so if we're ready.
Hello, everyone. My name is Zach Buck. I'm a junior at Vannar High School.
And I'm Avivanna, a sophomore at VHS. We'd love for you to join us in celebrating some amazing accomplishments in hashtag #OneLISD.
This week recognizes many forward-facing staff members for Administrative Professionals Week. Here is Superintendent Gearing with a special message.
Hello, everybody. It's Administrative Professionals Week, and there are so many important positions in this list that they couldn't find somebody to do the thank you, and so you got me. So we want to thank our administrative assistants. Let me tell you, these folks are the ones who really make the machine run. They make sure that their administrators are where they need to be, when they need to be, and they know what they're talking about when they get there. To our registrars on the campuses, you make it seem easy to keep track of all 42,000 of our students, whether they're in the district or out the district. Thank you for the work you do. We realize that it's attached to finances and all kinds of other important reporting that we do to the state. Our office aides, we couldn't do this job without you. When those lunchboxes come in late and they have to get to the kids, you're there to help us out, making sure that notes get where they need to be. Your help in our offices are critically important. To our attendance clerks, there are 42-plus-thousand students in this district, times 176 days of attendance, times at least five or six periods in the day. I don't know how you keep track of it all, but good job, and thank you. To our bookkeepers, who make sure every penny that comes in and every penny that goes out is kept track of, and we know exactly what's happening at all times. People don't see you, but we know that you're there, so thank you. To our campus techs, who make sure that machines like this one that I'm reading from right now are up and running and making us look good, we appreciate you. And finally, to our receptionists, you are the face of the district. You are often the first person that people see, and you are the voice of the district, the first person that people hear. You make us look great on a daily basis, and we know that you sometimes have to deal with difficult situations. So thank you from the bottom of our heart for everything that you do to change the lives of the people in our community.
So excited to see Ms. Sanders in such a high company. We want to personally thank you for all that you do for Vibrant Nation.
This week, we are also highlighting our fantastic librarians and library aide during National Library Week. Let's hear from Library Services Coordinator Becky Kizalda.
It's School Library Week, and I'm here to say thank you to our librarians, media specialists, and our library assistants for all that they do to serve the students and teachers of Leander ISD. You never know what you're going to see in one of our school libraries. In our middle, high school, and elementary campuses, you'll see students checking out books, but you'll also see them exploring makerspace opportunities, maybe working in the fab lab with our new 3D printers, and so much more. Thank you to all of our workers in our libraries. We are grateful for all you do.
We are spreading the word. Our librarian, Xandra Lopez, is worth checking out.
Last week, five Leander ISD high schools got red carpet treatment at the 10th Annual Heller Awards for Young Artists. This event recognizes high school musical theater programs and celebrates the product of students and teachers' hard work and talent. Congratulations to...
Annabelle Crawford from Vista Ridge High School for winning Best Female Lead in The Drowsy Chaperone. Langston Lee from Rouse High School for winning Best Male Lead in Anastasia. Vista Ridge High Schools' Jack Stratton and Crystal Sin, who won Best Supporting Male and Best Featured Individual, respectively. Leander High Schools' David Luna won Best Featured Ensemble for his role in Mama Mia. And in the Student Achievement category, Vista Ridge High Schools' Nicholas Paselli won Best Marketing, and Rachel Cook won Best Design for The Drowsy Chaperone.
Congratulations to these fabulous students and our outstanding librarians.
Finally, we want to recognize Comanche Elementary's Jace, Emma, Addison, Ahmed, Leonardo, and Emery for their Art on the Bus.
Cap Metro and Creative Action host the contest that teaches elementary school students the benefits of public transportation. Comacho's artwork will be showcased on Cap Metro vehicles, and these cosmos are out of this world.
Wow, leave it to empowered student learning and empowered staff for showcasing why Leander ISD is the best of the best.
From all of us here at Vannar High School, congratulations to these exceptional students and their families, and including our staff, for such high achievements.
All right, board members, the next item on our agenda is Communication and Announcement. Board members, I am seeing how busy you are, so I'll just kind of point you to the direction of how long I thought our board member remarks might take, until you pick your favorites, because I know y'all have been busy, board. Without further ado, who wants to open?
Okay, so the Heller Awards were amazing. We had the best time and so proud of all these kids. Langston Lee, just to mention, he won, he also won a trip to New York to do an intensive on Broadway, which is pretty amazing. So he was our best actor from Rouse. He was in Anastasia and Fantastic, so just wanted to mention that. I've done a couple of, of the dance shows, and we're, we've got two more this weekend, so I'm really excited about that. So our own Sarah Grissom joined her daughter onstage, which was amazing. So shout out to all the parents that have jumped onstage with their kiddos. I know that that's a lot of work. I know, you know, just big shout out to all of our dancers and Fine Arts Department. Their shows have just been so touching and fabulous to see them explore their passions. So that's it for me.
Last week, I was in El Paso for Leadership Tasby, went and visited a lot of different school districts, and just spent a lot of time in Leadership Tasby classes, talking about different board policy and how, how to help your school district and your board become better. And from there, went straight over to Houston for Robotics World Championship, where we had three LISD high schools represented in World Robotics Championship. They did amazing. Big shout out to those students, big shout out to the teachers that were there, from 6:00 in the morning until 8:00 o'clock out on those fields, just so much time that our teachers spend out of the classroom, supporting our students, and so just making sure we recognize and appreciate the above and beyond that our teachers give day after day.
On two Fridays ago, I got to experience my first Process Art Day at Laura Bush Elementary, and if y'all are not aware what Process Art Day is, you really need to go look at it. Ms. Gordon over there has truly created such an experience for our students to love art. And so you walk into this room, and everything is covered in plastic, and it is what, it's like a parent's worst nightmare, I'm going to be honest with you. But one station in particular, she had a Nerf, a Nerf bow and arrow, and you put the bow, yeah, arrow, I'm sorry, arrow and paint, and the kids are hitting it on their art. So the whole purpose is to make an art portfolio, and it's by using different ways to create art. So one of them was like using a plunger, clean plunger with paint, and just like pushing it down, and then a bowling ball. But it was just so much fun, and I got to experience with the kindergarten class, which y'all know I love, that's like one of my favorite age groups, but it was their first Process Art Day. And so to be able to share that experience with them and to see, not only the parents get to experience that, like it truly, that was so much fun. Like I just, it's just so much fun to see our teachers making learning experiences fun for our students. And I also got the privilege to go to Cedar Park High School this week and look at some of our capstone presentations, AP capstone presentations, and y'all, that's amazing. If y'all get a chance to head over there, please do it. These students, what Ms. Madrid has over there done for them is allowed our students to explore a subject that they're passionate about and just really dig into it, but they're learning so much more life skills than just what they're, you know, learning about. It's, you know, studying, it's putting on a 21-minute presentation, making sure you're looking at your judges and hitting all your spots and ensuring that you're documenting, documenting the information well, and it just, I'm just blown away the, what she's been able to give those students and how they've been able to really turn it into something that they're passionate about. And my last thing, and my favorite, one of my favorite celebrations happened yesterday, and it's the Live Celebration. Y'all know that is, if y'all don't know, it's a celebration for our 18-plus community. We have about 188 students, I believe, currently enrolled, and it is probably the best celebration ever because our students are given an opportunity to truly become community citizens, and when we think about our graduate profile, that's all we want for our students. But most importantly, as like a parent with a child with a disability, you want to see your children succeed. The future sometime is unknown, but to be able to have a program in place that our district has that sets up our students for adult life, y'all, it's one of the most amazing programs we have in Leander ISD, and if you haven't got a chance to go visit, please go do it. Denise Geiger is doing some amazing things over there. But most importantly, our young adults are thriving, and our businesses are just, it goes back to the whole community school. We've got the community, we've got our help, and it's just a beautiful thing when we come together.
So I got to also experience the Rouse Royal Review, and it was just thanks to the Rouse High School administration for the invitation. When I attend some of those Fine Arts events in schools, I'm like, does the public really know that this exists here so you don't have to go downtown Austin looking for things to do, just support the local schools because they are really, really good? And then also the Leaf Star Banquet as well was a wonderful celebration of teachers that were being honored by their students.
I had the opportunity to go hang out with all those kids that were here earlier from Stiles and join their leadership class, and it was so much fun. They just walk across the street to Aiken and to watch them interacting with all of the elementary students. They're not waiting for instruction, they're not sitting just kind of trying to help the kids. kids. It's full-on interaction, they're talking back and forth, they're making sure the kids are getting whatever they need for whatever projects. If y'all have not been to an Enrichment Friday at Aiken, you need to go. It's crazy, but it's so much fun. And to just watch these kids take ownership of not only the class, but the connections that they're making with their teachers and with these kids who are, you know, I don't remember in middle school wanting to spend much time with kids who were younger than me, and it was so, so fun to watch. And I also went to the Leaf Star Gala and the Live Celebration, and both were incredible. And to see that, it was really great to see that nothing that we do here exists in a vacuum. Everything that we're doing is because of the teachers and the students and the community and our families. It's all of these people working together, and it's been so incredible to watch these last two weeks, how well everybody's working together to just do the best for these kids. And lastly, I just wanted to say an extra thank you to our admin assistants, Cindy and Mitchie, because they keep track of us, and they know where we are all the time and are amazing at getting us what we need, so thank y'all very, very much.
I just want to say I appreciate all the hard work and the extra curriculum activities that happened at LISD. It's an amazing job done by our teachers and students. Thanks.
I want to highlight Student Voice that I saw. Of course, we see that all the time in the district, but there were two events where it really kind of stood out to me. One was the Leaf Banquet. To be able to see students selecting their teachers, life changers who made a difference in their life, and to spend just a few minutes to share that with the audience was amazing. And then the same thing, I got to see Student Voice again at Valor Day, where at Vandergriff High School, students select among their peers the ones that meet certain qualities and character traits. And if you haven't had an experience with Valor Day, I highly suggest you can get online, research a little bit about Vandergriff High School, the namesake, and kind of those character traits that they keep fostering in their culture and their community. Selflessness came out strong as they were sharing stories, and it's just, it's amazing to watch that community and that, I guess, as we say, our neighborhood schools, our different communities have their own voice, and yet you see too, students kind of empowering each other and selecting each other, going, oh, I think you have these qualities. It was an amazing event, so I was honored to be a part of it, because I'm not getting to do as much as I want right now, but if I can get out there for a few of these events, it fills my bucket, definitely, so. All right, we will go ahead and close up unless there's any District Administrative Committee updates. Are you on any district committees that you just want to let us know you met, or you're going to meet?
Yes, DEI met, what day is it? Today's Thursday, yesterday. It's been, it's been a long couple of weeks. DEI, last night was our final meeting for the year. We are going to plan on having some over the summer, potentially some Zoom calls just to get together, and Mr. Street might share some articles with us. Doing great work, great, great information update from the office, and we had a really good, robust conversation yesterday, so it was really good.
I am one of the board reps for the KICAT Committee, and I attended the last Science Materials Meeting of the year on Monday. I am not a science person, but they have me genuinely excited about all of the science with all the work that they're doing. They have a huge shift coming with the new state-mandated curriculum, and they're doing a really great job of explaining what's coming and why it's coming, and showing all of the examples of what our kids are going to be doing, and it's been really, really fascinating to see.
Yes, last night, yeah, last night was DEI. The night before, we had our policy. I was like, when did we meet? Okay, that's right, it was the night before, Policy Sub Committee met, and that's Francesca and Shadé and myself. And some of it was kind of just, we went through some, some policy and also talking about the process that we'd like to, you know, how we want to bring that and making, because when we first started that, there's been some changes on that committee, and so making sure that is, you know, the voice of the current policy and how we'd like to move that forward. So we'll be bringing more information soon.
So for internal audit?
Well, I know, if you can wait, we're on, we're down in the agenda, so you can do that.
Yeah, but, okay, so, but one of the policies that we reviewed was for the internal audits, and so we'll talk about that a little bit more.
Okay. All right, thank you so much. All right, and board members, in case you're wondering, we're trying to get our communication announcements on district committees in one spot of our agenda and any of our board committees in another part, and it's, we're still working through it, but the reason is, is because when you're on a district committee, really, you're kind of the admin setting the dates, the agenda, that's really not something kind of y'all are driving. And so you can just talk to us and say, we're meeting this, and there'll be a report later, right? But when we're on a board committee, that's like, okay, we did this, and here's some, here's some things going on, and as board members, y'all may have questions. Well, this section of the agenda isn't for questions, so we're trying to keep our board committee stuff down in the part of the agenda where we can ask questions of each other if we have them. So that's just kind of how we're trying to do the structure. And we'll move to our next agenda item, if that's okay? All right, we're going to go to our Citizen Comments, and before we begin, again, our Student Voice, we'll have our students introducing us to this agenda item.
The District and the Board of Trustees are the local government body charged with serving the educational needs of all schoolchildren in the Leander Independent School District, like me, my mother's favorite child, as they pursue their mission to cultivate each individual student while creating a safe and supportive environment. The Board is now taking up the Citizen Common Agenda Item, which is time set aside during this meeting to hear from the whole community, which can include a wide audience of the entire LISD family. Still, remember that there are other ways you can communicate with the Board. You can send them an email, come to a Board Cafe, or just tell them that you would like to chat sometime. The District believes the Leander family thrives and we ensure a welcoming, safe, and caring environment. Board operating procedures and BED Local specify guidelines, so it is important that you have read them before you speak. The Board wants to hear from everyone, but still asks you to be mindful of your conduct and the example you are choosing to set when presenting complex information. If you're presenting material that only certain high schoolers may encounter, remember that schoolchildren of all ages may participate in the Board meetings, either by watching them or you might see some in the audience. When the Board President calls your number, remember, watch the timer and focus your remarks to the time allotted. We know it can be difficult, but please conclude your comments when you hear the chime.
All right, and we do start, for our Citizens watching audience in there, we'll start our Speaker Comments with our students first, and then we move into adults. Sorry, adults, that sets the bar really high when you see those cute kids talking, and y'all get to follow, but without further ado, we'll go ahead and hear from Speaker Number One.
Good, good evening, Dr. Gearing and Board of Trustees. My name's Nahal, and I'm a club called Cool Cultures Club at Reagan Elementary. The main purpose of Cool Cultures Club is to recognize cultures and traditions that our families and students celebrate. We show, we're on common holidays like Ramadan, Holi, and Argentina, and Trinitis, but other people might celebrate different cultures. So we are asking to recognize different cultures like Rabafina from Italy, El Caginal from Spain, and Yoka from Iceland to make students happy and recognized. You should please consider doing this as a district, because students should experience different cultures. I noticed my friends and classmates enjoyed learning about Chinese, New Year, and Adolf Hitler as a delivery. So they most likely will have fun learning about different cultures and traditions. We're not acting for celebration, but recognition. So if you consider doing, consider doing this, we can do it once a week, so it'll be fun, engaging opportunities for different students to learn about different cultures every week. Learning their cultures increases respect towards cultural people and through to get better exposure to different students' cultures. If you still don't consider doing this, we understand, but please listen to this. Our schools depend on students' happiness and learning. So if you consider doing this, the students and the schools might benefit from this. The schools might get higher ratings, and students might have better experiences.
Speaker Number Two?
Thank you, school board members, Dr. Gearing, LISD teachers and staff, and the police officers who are here to protect us. Today, I'd like to talk about for well-financed, support for well-financed public schools. I am proud to say that two days ago, I voted in my very first election. I voted to support, support all the urgently needed upgrades to LISD buildings, classrooms, and equipment. As a senior of Leander High School, I can attest that these upgrades are very important to the mission of the schools and the economic vitality of our community. Bonds are really the only way to pay for new campuses, building upgrades, and other improvements. By attracting people who want to live in good neighborhoods with good schools, bonds pay for themselves. Not having bonds is much more costly because the economies of the various cities served by LISD will suffer. I had a conversation with a fellow student who said she didn't really care because she won't be a student next year, but we should not forget our obligation to those who come after us, nor should we forget our gratitude to the people who become, who came before us. All ISD alumni and all students who are eligible to vote should support good schools by voting for all the bond proposals. A vote for the bonds pays our debt to all the teachers and staff who educate us, educated us, and pays it forward for all the future students of LISD. Thank you very much.
All right, Speaker Number Three.
Thank you to the board members, Superintendent Gearing, and LISD teachers and staff for all you do, and to the police officers here to protect us. Today, I'd like to talk to you about why it is so important for families to support healthy, well-financed public schools, in particular, the bond package being voted on now. While I won't be able to vote for several years, as an LISD student, I think it's important that every voter understands how much these bonds matter to the well-being of we Leander students and the larger community. Some of the buildings were built when the population of LISD service area was a small fraction of what it is now. For example, in my time in LISD schools, the population of the city of Leander has almost quadrupled. Families move here with the knowledge of great and rapidly improving LISD schools, a committed base of teachers and staff, and strong involvement from parents, the community. Passing the bonds will keep our communities on a path towards growth, where diverse, vibrant, welcoming school communities are the biggest draw. The last thing we need is the kind of overcrowding, rundown facilities, and poorly equipped classrooms we see in districts that fail to pass needed bonds. We need an educated citizenry that is excellent for all, and that begins with excellent schools. That's why I urge all parents, teachers, staff, and eligible students to support these important bond measures. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Speaker Number Four. Speaker Number Five. Speaker Number Five? Oh, is it?
No.
No, I'm sorry, I, Speaker Number Four, thank y'all for making sure. You're like, wait, where's? Oh, wait a second, we need to make sure we can hear you. Can you press the button or get a little closer to it? It says it's on. Let's push it maybe a little closer to him?
Good evening, Dr. Gearing and Board of Trustees. My name is Bhavish, and I'm here to ask you to please add more holidays to your district calendar, so more students and teachers will know about different holidays. Right now, we observe the most common holidays, which isn't what necessarily everyone celebrates. Some people celebrate other holidays, such as Victory Day and Republic Day, which is from Azerbaijan. Some people may celebrate these holidays, but there are probably more holidays that we don't celebrate, because they are not common holidays. We can have more less common holidays in the libraries, so that way we can know about more holidays that possibly our community celebrated holidays. I think there should be more holidays that everyone can know about, and is also a great opportunity for us to learn about. If you can agree to the solvable agreement, we can have more people to learn about more holidays, and we can know about more cultures that we don't know about. If you consider this great, we can help and solve this problem. Thank you for listening.
All right, and I think Speaker Number Four, I think I got us off number, did Speaker Number, no, no, okay, so then Five, we're done, okay, then Six.
No, no, we're on Five now.
He was Five. I'm looking at the name. I know, but they're saying, yep, so we've got Six. I know, I'm reading. Yeah.
Four is not here.
All right, Six.
Good evening, Dr. Gearing and Board of Trustees. My name is Hannah Cruz, and I'm a part of the Cool Cultures Club in Reagan Elementary. I started this year. I'm here because I wanted to talk about the food in our district cafeterias, because I think that it's unfair that you serve only American food and once, and once in a while, orange chicken with rice with a fortune cookie, which is something from China. Also, most of the time, the food contains meat with it, which is bad for the vegetarians. This means that it's really hard for them to eat. This could also be a great way for students to try new foods they have not tried before. So I suggest they add on new recipes, like more soups from Japan or Korean hot dogs from Korea. And remember, I am not only talking for my school, but the whole district. So thanks for your time and have a good day.
All right, Speaker Number Seven.
Hello, Dr. Gearing and Board of Trustees. My name is Jan. I'm a student of the Reagan Race Community, and I'm here to talk about more diverse schools and the quality and diversity of our food in cafeterias. In our library, we routinely display cultural celebrations from America and other countries. And that I noticed, while we might celebrate some festivals from major international countries, such as India, China, and Mexico, we rarely cover any festivals, say, places in Africa or South America, or Ukraine or Russia, and we don't mention those or learn about those. For example, this year, we've learned about Christmas, Thanksgiving, and Easter, but, and only a little bit from other countries, like Chinese Lunar New Year. So I'd like to bring some attention to that. And I feel like it's not fair that some people celebrate those while some people don't, and they don't get included to celebrate those. So I feel that there's definitely room for improvement, and we should do that to the extent we can. Lastly, I'd like to bring some attention to quality and diversity of the food in cafeterias. Diversity. The food in the cafeteria appears to be a three-legged horse, the American leg, the Mexican leg, and the Italian leg, and we rarely venture into any other cuisines, so I know there's room for improvement there. I actually just switched from buying food at the cafeteria to bringing food from home because of the lack of quality. So I feel there's definitely room for improvement there, too. I hope you consider one of our folks, and thank you for listening.
All right, so for our audience and for our board members, I would like to say I think this is the first time in history where we have seen our students come speak and almost number or outnumber the adults coming to comment. So students, thank you for Student Voice and for coming and sharing your concerns with the Board. But we're also excited, here we go, Citizens Adults, we have adult comments next. Let's go on, Speaker Number Eight.
What an inspiring day, what a set of inspiring speeches, I have to say. I'm really humbled to see a group of kids all give a better speech than any speech I've ever given to this Board or to the City Council or any other. It's really incredible, it's wonderful. This afternoon, my wife and I had the extraordinary privilege of visiting the Leander High School Campus and working with a group of kids to install some perennials to beautify the school campus. And I was just really inspired by that and by this example as well, that kind of civic-mindedness and the innocence and generosity of kids to invest not only in their own future, but in the future of their community, in the future of the schools, and even when they're not going to be around, to see seniors do that. To see seniors do that is really a great thing, to know that they may come back 10 years later and see that. That's wonderful. And I think that's the spirit that we should think about, the future of our schools and our community, and whether we're willing to invest. And so, like my daughters told you, I strongly support the bonds. The reason I support the bonds, not only they pay for themselves, but that they are a demonstration to everyone who will be moving here that we really care about the quality of education in this community. We care about the students. We care about the teachers. We care about the vibrancy of our whole community. And I think that that really demonstrates that. Just a really remarkable day. And I really hope we see many more cases where a lot more kids speak than the adults. I'd really love that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, speaker? Speaker number nine. Wait, wait, let me make sure I've got my numbers right. Yeah, speaker number nine.
Neighbors and the board, how you doing tonight? I just want to talk about transparency, transparency of this bond, which should exist but does not. A little late in the process, I guess, but I'll just go ahead and give you my two cents. You waited till May, and you waited to the last second to file this, right? So that was not good. We already had indication of where you were going. We know you need money. We're not trying to starve you, but you need more transparency. For instance, on the CFAC, I had a friend was on that, and he did a really good job until he was removed for, I guess, asking too many questions, or maybe not convenient questions. So that was not good. Thirty years' experience excused. All right. He also does this for a living. He's an accountant, excused. So I went ahead and filed a public information request for the due diligence that hopefully you did on this bond. Why did I get back? Oh, some propaganda PDFs that don't really share any light. I'm a little worried about whether you actually did the due diligence. Okay? So at this point, I have no idea what you're doing with that $230 million from monetization. I didn't go to schools or anything like with these Taj Mahals you have or... I'll tell you about that some other time. What I'm looking at right now, and by the way, HB3 is going to pass. You're going to get to your security money, so don't worry about that. I'm looking at what is more like a railroading than a bond election. Thanks.
Thank you, speaker number nine. Speaker number 10.
My two high schoolers attend Leander High School, and it's shameful that the district has neglected that school. With the $37 million maintenance and facilities annual budget, why did the CFAC have to add a $300,000 roof repair to the bond? The MNO has the funds to cover roofs, which have been repaired in the past years with these funds, and lights, and sinks. Just because the district cannot manage their $37 million maintenance and facilities budget does not mean the taxpayers or our future generations should go further into debt. LISD is not a fast-growth district. Last summer, the former CFO, Elaine Cogburn, was already using the term moderate growth. In fact, enrollment has declined since 2019 and would have been in the red without the three- and four-year-olds. Parents moving into the district, that unrealized growth is not due to COVID. In five years, over 40% of the elementary schools will be below 80% capacity, and several even below 60%. How does the district justify the taxpayers using bond money to build more schools when half will be almost empty? The district had one job: to educate future generations. Instead, according to the district's TARP data, over 6,000 high schoolers are not college or career-ready as compared to 2019. I hope voters realize that no amount of money will persuade the district to do the right thing when it comes to our kids and tax dollars.
Thank you, speaker number 10. Speaker number 11.
Thank you, Dr. Gearing and board members, for all you do and put back into the community. I want to take a moment just to thank your communications department for all the education and work they've done for this bond. When you look at what was available for the 21-bond, it's small compared to what they have done this year. And I really appreciate that your website has links to all the information you can want. If you go and look, it's there. Y'all have made upgrades to the website since I moved here eight years ago to where things are easier to find. The search feature works. You guys are doing a lot to provide that information for those willing to look for it. I know that many of our admin staff, Dr. Gearing and Jimmy Distler, have been all over the place presenting the bond information to groups. I've happened to be at a couple of those, and I've learned something new at everyone. And so I just want to thank you and tell you that I appreciate all your hard work, and I am in support of all three bonds, and I have already voted. So let's go, let's get this bond passed so we can take care of our infrastructure and not have to scrape buildings in a few years. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, speaker number 11. Speaker number 12.
I want to thank everyone for their service. I also, I am just blown away by our students. I mean, my God, how incredible. How proud we should all be. I wish more of the adults in Leander would listen to those kids, to those students. Everything that they share with us and talk to us about, I think is very important. We're going to have disagreements, but I don't know. We moved here a few years ago, five years ago, from Virginia. In Virginia, I don't think I had ever seen parties oppose not a school bond. You know, maybe some other type of bond, but a school bond? Everybody supported school bonds because they supported their kids. And they knew that their kids' education is what's going to guarantee the community of the future. We would rather build schools than to build prisons. And we've got to give them the education they need. Part of that education refers to something that the little ones refer to today, about multiculturalism or interculturalism. You know, we should, as far as I'm concerned, any reason to have a party, to have a celebration, and to include some education with it, that's win-win. We should do that. Thank you again.
All right, thank you, speaker number 12. Speaker number 13.
So I'm going to explain why we don't want this bond. Misinformation, this is what we get accused of all the time, but I come with facts, not feelings. Representative Middleton, his exact quote, "What that means, but for the bond, the rate could be lower, which is still a tax increase." That's why it didn't say rate. That's why we didn't put rate in there because of that situation where, but for taking on additional debt, you could have a lower rate. Jarrell ISD is only 26 miles north of us in Wilco, and they also have two elementary schools on their bond in May. The big difference is the cost. Jarrell's two buildings will be $103.6 million with a 900-student capacity. Leander ISD, two elementary schools on their bond, $151.3 million for a capacity of 800 students. Ask yourself this: why is it costing us, the taxpayers of Leander ISD, an additional $47.7 million to build two elementary schools compared to Jarrell ISD? I remember Tristi Gautier asking this exact question to Jimmy, and he said he'd get back to him. And I haven't heard it discussed again, so I'm curious if this was ever, if he ever got back regarding this. To my fellow LISD community, we have made progress with the board, being more transparent, but they still have a lot of work to do on being fiscally responsible. Until the district can recognize that our own community is suffering and can't afford this extra debt, which will raise our property taxes per the state, Texas state senators, vote no on all LISD bonds.
Okay, thank you, speaker number 13. We'll go ahead and close our citizen comments. We're going to move into our consent agenda next. Board members, I have heard several requests to keep moving our items that are like, ones that we've either already discussed or that are ones that happen frequently, that y'all will do your homework ahead of time. You'll look at them, you'll read them. If, board members, you're looking at something, I need y'all to help as we're doing this, as we're trying to help kind of streamline our meetings, I need your assistance. If there's an item on here and you want to vote no on a consent item, you need to go ahead and break it out so that we can have that vote separate. Because what we don't want to do is not be transparent to our community. We don't want our community to know what it was we were voting no on. And if we're putting four, or five, or six items in there, it's important that we're clear on what that is. So again, if you see something on here that you want, let's be transparent with our community. We'll break that one out. You say you want to make a motion to sever. You pull out that item, and then we can leave everything else on consent. That kind of helps us kind of keep navigating that flow and doing what y'all have requested, which is to streamline this meeting as much as we can.
I would like to consider the adoption of the Texas Association of School Boards Comprehensive Policy. Pull that out.
All right. Is there a specific policy? Which item? We can't, oh, it would be C, is what it is. So then we can go and have the questions next. But is there any other item, agenda item on here that we need to pull out? All right, so then I'll need a motion to approve items A, B, and D as presented.
I move that the board approve the consent agenda items A, B, and D as presented.
Second. I have a motion from Christine, second from Shawde. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays, motion carries. All right, we'll pull up the item. Consider adoption of Texas Association of School Board Comprehensive Policy Review, Local Policies AE, AF, BBB, BBD, BBE, BBG, BDB, BDD, BE, BJCG, CAA, CBD. These were all the ones, board members, that we talked about at our last board meeting. So is there any other conversations before we have a vote on these items? Okay, if there's no other questions then, all those in favor of approving it, please raise your hand. Oh, I need a motion. Oh, yeah, I do, sorry. I just want to make sure, the person who removed it, did you want to talk about it, or you just wanted to remove it?
Well, according to the policy that we put in place for the consent agenda, if you wanted to vote against it, you need to pull it out.
Okay, so, but I just want to make sure that you understood this is where we have a discussion about it?
That's right, I understand.
Okay. All right, so then I need a motion for approval. Otherwise, it doesn't.
I move that the board adopt the proposed revisions to Policy AE Local, AF Local, BBB Local, BBD Local, BBE Local, BBG Local, BDB Local, BDD Local, BE Local, BJCG Local, CAA Local, CB Local as presented.
I second. Motion from Christine, second from Anna. You didn't repeat it, though. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Six ayes, all those opposed, one nay, motion carries. All right, we'll move on now to our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. We had the honor this week of being at the LIV celebration, and just, our kids were absolutely incredible through this process. It's heartwarming to me that we celebrate each and every child in our system, no matter what. And just the energy and power of these students in this room just a few days ago was fantastic. I'm going to repeat a little bit, so I apologize. Well, it was in the awards section, too. We already had video, but I'm going to do it anyway. So the HELLER Awards are an Austin staple and just incredible that our kids perform at such a high level. It's hard to believe that they are high school kids. This was the 10th annual awards for the HELLER Awards, over 400 students from 33 high schools across the Austin area in 19 different categories. And of course, you've already heard how well-represented our students were from our high schools. But not only that, our board members, too. And so we had a lot of fun, yes. This is really special, though. Langston Lee from Rouse High School going on to represent Austin at the National High School Musical Theater Awards, more commonly known as the Jimmy Awards. And so that's going to be in the middle of June on Broadway in New York City. So just an incredible experience for these young people. And then, just to highlight once again, the number of awards that Leander ISD walked away with from the HELLER Awards, just incredible performances across the board. Really fun. And a ton of nominations, correct. All right, so I want to highlight the LIV celebration a little bit as well because there are just so many things that make this a very special celebration in our district. And one of those is the partnership that we have in the community with our businesses. And so we have two different kinds of partnerships with our businesses. We have inclusive business partners who are labeled with this yellow sign that they can have in their windows. And they offer our students opportunities to come and intern with them and work with them and shadow and do things like that. And then we also have our inclusive employers who actually hire our students to work for them for pay across this community. And it's incredible to realize how many of our partners we have in this community that are helping and serving our students. Whataburger is one of those. We just highlighted, this young man was incredible. Came up here and gave a public speech in front of a lot of people. This room was packed full of people and just did a fantastic job. It's just heartwarming to know and understand that the individual capabilities of these students has been maximized entirely. It's just really fun. But this wouldn't happen without some very special adults in the system. And so I do want to give huge kudos to Kimberly Waltman for leading this program and for the care and love in her heart for all of our students. It's very, very special to witness. And Denise Geiger. If you have not met Denise, then you have to make an effort to just go and have a conversation with her because she created this program 21 years ago and has been growing it and shaping it ever since. And she just has an incredible vision for what each and every one of these students can accomplish, and she makes sure that it happens. And so there's a wonderful example of strong back, soft front, wild heart in this employee. And it's just incredible to witness how she pulls that off. So we do have a bond on the election, on the ballot, coming up in just over a week. On May 6, we will get our final results on this. And so any folks who are out there who are still wanting to find out information, you can go to our website at leanderisd.org/bond2023. I mean, there's lots of information there. We do urge you to be informed, and we do really urge you to get out and vote. And so just some quick facts for you. This is after three days of voting. We do have 147,402 registered voters in the district. In the first three days, we've had only 2,575 people vote. And so that's a turnout of 1.75%. And you can see it's pretty evenly split across Williamson and Travis County. This is the opportunity that we have for us to hear the voice of our community, for them to tell us what they want us to do as we go forward. And we need as many of those 147,000 registered voters to get out and vote as possible. There are still a few days of early voting left until Tuesday, May 2. And then, of course, you have the opportunity to vote on May 6 as well, on Election Day, that's a Saturday. We do urge you to get out and vote.
Dr. Gearing, just remind folks they can vote on Saturday and Sunday.
So there is only voting on Sunday in Travis County.
Travis County, I'm sorry, you're right, that's right.
Travis County has Sunday voting, that's correct, but not in Williamson County. But on Saturday, May 6, that's Election Day. So this is just a bond flyer. Just a reminder, this is on the website. People can go and find all the information that they need to make sure that they're well-informed when they get inside the ballot box. We urge them to do that. And again, just another picture of some of our LIV celebration students and the incredible work that they're doing across the district. Thank you, Madam President.
Board members, any questions?
I have a quick question. For the bond flyers for our communities, I believe that we have campus-specific flyers on the website as well. Is that correct? So if people want to see just what applies to their feeder pattern, that is up on our site.
That is also up on the site. And then there are also some specialty flyers. That is also up on the site, and then there are also some specialty flyers too about, for instance, the baseball softball turf, there's a specific flyer about that. They can also go and look at the dropdown menu of the projects so that they can see each itemized project and the dollar amount associated with each project as well.
Great, thank you.
All right, board members, that'll conclude this agenda item, and since we have a guest speaker this evening, we are going to move up, if they're available, our Legislative Committee update. All right, I will give a small update on Legislative Committee, oh, he's really small up there. We, as a committee, we're meeting pretty routinely, talking about items that are on legislative discussions and up there. We've heard a lot this week, last Thursday, we talked about a few items, we talked about HB 100, we talked about finance, we talked about HB 2125, and we also talked about assessment and accountability because that was up in the House. We also have talked about the Senate discussions as far as what they're what they're discussing about with with bonds in general. I think earlier we heard one side of a discussion in the committee, I will say, there was more discussion on the floor. I can send out links to anybody who wants the full discussion on floor. It is never as easy as people want to make it sound, there are a lot of layered conversations happening. So without further ado, Colby, you're up. We can't hear you, Colby, but we know you're saying brilliant things.
I think you can hear him.
Okay. All right, Colby, we still can't hear you. All right, we're going to wait for them to get audio. Colby, keep, interrupt me if you if if you just keep saying something and I'll stop talking when you say something. The board would like you to sing. Are you there? Not yet.
Yeah, can y'all hear me?
Yes, we do, we have contact, people. All right, go ahead.
So apparently it's going through my phone to my computer to you, so a little bit of lag, I apologize. So real quickly, we actually just got off the floor in the House, the committees are still going this evening, and so I apologize for not being able to be there with all of you. So Trish touched on House Bill 100, that was passed this week. The preliminary runs looked pretty good for for Leander ISD. Obviously, we would like to continue to see those improved a little bit, but the early numbers that I've seen, projections have been about 8.2 million gain in the first year for Leander and 13.5 in the second year. Now, reminder, the the bill does change the basic allotment increase, some of that money, or at least 50% of the basic allotment increase has got to go to teacher salaries, which I think, you know, is a priority of ours, and and hopefully we will continue to improve on that as we move through legislative process. That's obviously a big issue regarding our workforce. So the other issues I wanted to talk about briefly, House Bill 3, House Bill 13, Senate Bill 11, those are all the school, mega school safety, you know, legislation. 3 and 13, I think we, last time we talked, I discussed that 13 actually had a better funding mechanism than House Bill 3 did, and House Bill 3 and Senate Bill 11 had the same funding mechanism. Well, there was an amendment offered to House Bill 3 that was accepted that now matches House Bill 13's funding, which is essentially $100 per student school safety allotment. So that that's obviously a big improvement, very happy with that change. Senate Bill 11 is over in the House, it was heard in committee this week. We will see what happens with that bill as it moves forward, you know, whether the House actually subs their language into the bill, or the Senate takes the House bill and does the same. It's not clear which will happen, but I think something will happen, so we'll keep our eye on that. We also talked about House Bill 1605 previously. This is the big curriculum bill that we had some concerns about and that we discussed. Obviously, that bill is moving through the process, the Senate has passed their version of the bill. I anticipate in the next week or two, we will have that bill on the calendar, and we will have a discussion about, you know, whether the House is going to sub their language in for the Senate bill. I will say that that bill is, they have taken some of our suggestions, particularly with the contract language for teachers, since you are issuing contracts probably right now or soon will be. Obviously, some of those changes they were wanting need to be for the next school year. So they did take that change, but we still have some changes and, you know, kudos to the leadership and the House and Senate, you know, authors for continuing to listen to us, so hopefully we can get some of those changes, you know, codified here soon. But we will, we will maintain, you know, the contact that we have right now. Sped Advocates Bill, our bill that we've pursued the last couple of sessions, first want to give kudos to to Anna Smith for doing a great job of testifying. We had a lot of support at the hearing, we had worked with some of the major, you know, special education groups as we moved forward on that bill. Unfortunately, there was still some criticism, and I still chalk that up to, you know, more issues within that community in terms of the advocates than it really was about the district. I think it's, I will say this, I think the district offering the bill, I think it's unfortunate that some people see that as possibly the district wanting to get some sort of action taken through the agency, and that certainly has not been the case. This is about protecting parents, and that's been true for the entire time, and and what you as a board have told me throughout the process. So I think, you know, we're going to continue to work on that bill and work with the the special education community and hopefully get them to a point where, you know, all of our students have the same quality of representation that they deserve. And so as we move forward with that, I'll keep, you know, the communication going with you all. Representative Bucy did a great job of laying out that bill, and clearly, there's still some work to do, but I'm confident that we can, we can work through it. So a couple other things that were on your priorities going into the session that I think need to be updated. We have the November-only elections bill, which obviously has been offered, you know, several times in the past, and gives us cause for concern because of the increase in costs and the inflation that would occur both in the bond market and construction markets if all political subdivisions had to go at the same time on their their bond elections. Thus far, those bills are kind of both in the same spot, both still left pending, or excuse me, one is left pending in committee, one has not come up for a vote in the Senate. So we will continue to express our opposition to those to those bills to ensure that our voters have the opportunity to weigh in whenever, you know, the electorate wishes to weigh in in terms of those two uniform dates. So that's, that's my update for now. I will say, just generally, we still have issues between the two chambers on property taxes and and obviously, you know, there's going to be some property tax relief, it's just the how at this point between the two chambers that we're waiting on, and then some other ancillary issues that don't concern education. But I do think some of those things have to be solved before we get some of the answers on some of our priorities and education in general. And I think that's, that's a good summary of what's going on, and hopefully, as we move forward in these last 30 days, we'll start seeing some of the the good work that you all have done on the ground level and your community has done come to fruition.
Okay, thank you very much, Colby. For board members and community, I will say, signing dies May 29th, and so what we're going to see is kind of the wind down of the calendar, and it's during that process of the wind down of the calendar where you see the Senate discussions kind of get through their process, the House discussions get through their process, and then on the issues that you hear where chambers have differences, that's where they resolve in conference committee. A lot of the bills and the big issues you see moving won't actually be decided until like that final week or the week before. So, you know, stay tuned if you're wanting to watch a certain bill or you're concerned or you're you're hoping and you think, oh, yeah, this bill has exactly the language I thought it would have, or, oh, no, this bill doesn't have any of the language I thought it would have. Either way, that bill can change tremendously between now and when it is finally passed of both chambers, if it gets to that point. So Colby's just giving us an update, but know that it all can change, is subject to change, and most likely might change. The school finance bill, I'll point out that although numbers sound promising, you know, our school district has a budget where we're putting 87% into payroll and benefits, and so when we're talking about covering for teachers and trying to get inflation, the district, other districts across the state have been advocating to match inflation. Basic allotment hasn't had an increase since 2019, and so if you increased basic allotment to match inflation, you'd be near $1,000. Of course, we have heard people go, oh, that's, that's, there's no way we're going to get there, but I think it's important to keep that number front and center as these discussions happen to help us kind of realize maybe where the disconnect or delta is. HB 100, as it came out, does $90 in the first year, and I think it's 60 or 50 in the second year. Combine them, it's less than 200, and that's way less than 1,000. And so that impacts, for us as a school district, that's what we've talked about in our legislative summit of where we want to use to fund our teacher salary. So we'll continue to be watching those discussions. May Day is one of the things that trustees are getting engaged with. If you are interested in that, you can reach out to me, Central Texas School Board Association. We're talking about doing a press release on May 1st to talk about the need for a basic allotment to to get closer. It would be great if they matched inflation, but at least to get closer, get a little more. And I will say that there are some bills that we're looking at, I think, I can think of three bills that give the Texas Education Agency over 100 new staff. And so when you see, when you combine those, and then you know there's other other bills that are moving, it's, it's like, okay, we've got to kind of find a balance. And so you'll have some some outcry about, okay, what what are we doing with that new staff and how are we really supporting our public education? Mainly, how are we going to support our students in the classroom? How are we really going to support our teachers? So alls I can say for right now is stay tuned, and there's a bit of angst and concern, but I do believe that lawmakers are up there discussing. I think it's important we continue to have the conversations. I think you'll see that there's more complexity to these ideas. They're definitely not as tweetable as we want, especially when you start talking about debt and school finance. So thank y'all for staying engaged and for our Legislative Committee meeting over and over and over again because there's a lot of discussions happening. If you have any questions, please reach out to Cindy, and she'll get them to Colby and make sure he reaches out to you. Colby, anything else?
No, just, that's a great summary, Trish, and yeah, I want to put that out as well that inflation has not kept up, and even with the increases that we're potentially looking at, that's a great point, we are not anywhere near where we potentially need to be. And obviously, everyone's dollar is not going as far, and that includes the school district. And I did want to say one more thing on the Advocates Bill. If if any of you, anyone in the community continues to hear about that that bill, please contact me. We really want to make this bill something that is impactful for parents, impactful for students. That's our our first and foremost priority, and I know it's coming from the district, and I know that's, you know, got some people's antennas up, but it really is something that we think can can make a difference for for kiddos. And so if anyone from those those communities can can reach out and, you know, if you have questions, please just let me know.
All right. Board members, any other questions for Colby or the committee? All right. Thank you very much, Colby.
Thank you. Y'all have a good night.
All right. Okay, we will move on to our next item on our agenda. We'll go back in order, we'll start with our strategic plan, formative review, safe and innovative learning environments.
John, Jason and I are excited to be here to present the work of our amazing district on safe and innovative learning environments. Our purpose tonight is to talk to you about our aligned efforts in this work, and specifically, you have heard four presentations already, we are the last goal area focusing on safe and innovative learning environments. And as a reminder, this slide should look very familiar to all of you, but we are really working hard on system alignment. We have our graduate profile that is our North Star, we have our strategic plan that is our roadmap, and all of that is built on the foundation of our vision, mission, and core values that were adopted by all of you, so that is guiding all of our work. So the goal area is about providing safe, supportive, inclusive, and innovative learning environments to inspire each individual learner so that our students feel valued and inspired to embrace challenges, take risks, advocate for their learning, and leverage their strengths as they grow and contribute to their community. And there are two system responses. That first one is about updating the long-range facilities plan to meet the changing needs of LISD's growing populations for safe, inclusive, and innovative learning environments, and implement flexible structures and strategies that focus on student engagement and meaningful learning. And we'll touch on that tonight, but you will also hear a presentation about that a little bit later. And then the second system response is to support inclusive and safe spaces for all learners to own their learning and pursue their interests and passions. And so of course, we decided to go in an opposite direction a little bit, and we're going to start with that second area and talk about the many examples of innovation within our LISD classrooms, and then focus on the importance of the safety so that we can make all of the innovation happen and connect students with their passion and interests in their learning. So as I mentioned, there are many opportunities of innovation, and so we're focusing on inclusive and safe spaces and innovative learning environments, but John made me narrow it down to just a few, but there were many examples that we looked at, and so I'm going to start with our elementary innovation labs. Many of our elementaries have to have really worked to provide free spaces for our students to engage in critical thinking and problem solving. And so we've got the lightning labs and the innovation labs and the inquiry labs, and our students are just very excited to engage in these spaces and have got the first and the third picture there of students engaged in that learning. And they are developing creativity, and our team is excited to look at curriculum across our system to help support these innovation labs. The second picture there is our assistive technology team and the Leander High School robotics team. We have toys, and they are adapting toys to meet the needs of our students with limb differences. And so just a traditional toy that would make noise and spin, and some of our students don't have access to that. And so our assistive technology team worked with the robotics team to take these toys apart, which was incredible, and add switches and buttons so that our students with mobility differences can press a button and activate the toy, just like any any other person or student engaging with that toy. So that's a really exciting partnership there, and that was in partnership with the LEAF Grant, so shout out to LEAF for funding that project. We also have many maker spaces, and I know that y'all are familiar with maker spaces, but we have many across our system, and part of the 2021 Technology Bond that passed were the 3D printers, and our librarians are thrilled to be utilizing those. I've been at several libraries and after-hour meetings, and I'm seeing them running, and they are doing their 3D printing, and it's very exciting to see. And they've engaged in lots of 3D printer training, of course. And they've engaged in lots of 3D printer training, of course. And we are working to create a standard across the system for the items and the materials and resources within our libraries for those maker spaces labs. And then that last picture there is the student support team. There are two campuses there that are engaging together, and the goal of the student support team is collective responsibility. So an innovative way to support inclusive learning environments is to answer the question or the questions, what do our students need? And who are the, who are the best people to provide that? Or who is the right person to provide that support for the student? So this model looks at breaking down silos, cross-training to support the individual needs of each and every student in our system. We can't do that without training, so we have developed an inclusive practices academy, and we have 16 campuses across our system. We've done it in two cohorts, and they are coming and engaging in that learning on collaborative teaching, using data to drive your instruction, specially designed instruction, and, and really how to support the needs together as a general educator and a special educator, and even a general educator and a support staff, such as a reading specialist going in and supporting in the general ed environment. A few more examples that I have is that we have our digital learning team who are working with campuses to support digital portfolios for our students. And so you see the, the student on the left there that is engaging in all of the learning that he has done so far over the year and getting ready to share that learning with others. And so looking to expand those digital portfolios, just that, that highlight the individual work of each of our students so they have, they can celebrate their learning throughout the year. Another shout out for LEAF's support is we have Uncharted Learning that LEAF supports and funds within our district. That's the incubator, the mixed ink, the fresh ink, just innovation and entrepreneurship opportunities and experiences for our students from elementary to high school. And we're excited to share that we have a mobile maker expansion as part of Uncharted Learning at two additional high schools coming in this fall. So that is more opportunities for our students to engage in that amazing program. We couldn't talk about innovation and learning experiences without highlighting our early college high school. So that third picture there is our early college high school students that will be working through this program to graduate with their associate's degree, which is a huge celebration as they move into a college setting. It's a small environment, and the experience is, is tailored to the individual needs of each and every student in that, in that high school. There's a positive impact on the culture. Anyone can attend, and it really is, is a system designed to support first-generation college students, which is a celebration. Clay and his team are doing a great job allowing the students to guide the creation of the culture at early college high school, from clubs to the courses and the coursework. One of my favorite things was culture and academics equals a school created around student interest, and it provides the supports that they need to be successful. So great work happening at early college high school. And then lastly there, we have our first empowered learning institute. I talked about the importance of professional learning. We have to do that to be able to create these innovative experiences in our classrooms for our students. And that is the first cohort that graduated on April the 14th. And their work has, they've engaged in student-centered practices using edge of protocols. And we also had some instructional coaches engage with this team as well. So lots to highlight and lots to celebrate along the lines of inclusive and innovative learning environments.
All right. We'll talk a little bit more about innovative learning environments as far as classrooms go. So preparing for classroom interactive flat panels, we're getting feedback from those. That will be using the devices the most. It's very important for us to talk to teachers, talk to campuses, and see what these folks want as far as features go. About three months ago, we reached out to campuses for volunteers to form a classroom interactive flat panel committee. We love committees here. We received about 50 volunteers, including teachers, principals, librarians, instructional coaches, IT employees, and we scheduled five meetings total. One field trip to two different districts, that was what we called the party bus. I've never seen people eat lunch so fast. It was probably less than 10 minutes. We were bouncing back between high school and elementary to see how these other districts were using the flat panels. We have had two demo days where two manufacturers came one day, they got to, the committee got to play with each one. We had another meeting where two other manufacturers came, they got to play with those. The most valuable piece of this puzzle for us is feedback from end-users on their favorite features. The priority that we have in, in tech and overall is the professional development for teachers on using the interactive flat panels in their classrooms. So that was, all three of these pictures are of the committee. And the last piece that we're super excited about in, in tech for the MLISD program, it's kind of being refreshed. An RFP was recently released and completed, which will bring more modern and updated student devices across all grades and staff. And so as a result of that, MLISD pricing has been lowered starting now and for the 23-24 school year. So we want to provide easier access to devices for students. The student laptop non-refundable security deposit amounts for the 23-24 school year are reduced from $75 per year per student to 60 for high school students. There's going to be a much faster, better Windows laptop. And then from $75 a year to $40 a year for middle school students. The other key piece here is students that are enrolled in the free and reduced lunch program. It used to be half-price fees. We did a scholarship. Now it'll be $0 just across the board for free and reduced lunch students, so.
Good evening. As Kimberly said, she was only given a few minutes because I have a lot to talk about. I don't always get an opportunity to talk about safety in open session. As we know, most safety items are discussed in, in closed session. And so I was out of town, and I came back, and I had a lot of notes to make sure John talks about all these different things. And so I actually made notes, which is not normal for me. And so to hit everything on, on the screen that you see there and some, some other items that I'd like to talk about. When we think about a safe learning environment, we believe it is important to operate based on the five phases of emergency planning. And you can see one of those diagrams up there that starts with prevention, and that's where I'd like to start tonight, is planning for the safe, secure, and healthy learning spaces is a continuous process in which all phase, five phases are reviewed and revised regularly. Starting with prevention, we take a whole child approach when we think about prevention. It is important for students and staff to, to learn and, and be supported in a way to help students self-manage and self-regulate to best work through challenging situations. Being safe, secure, and healthy involves behaviors that can be learned and should be practiced. We have programs throughout the district for our students, staff, and community to continue to learn these habits. Our counseling and student support team spend time working with staff and students to implement programs throughout schools focused on character and leadership building and strategies for students to learn safe, safe and healthy skills. Second step in our elementaries and the use of restorative and relational practices in all of our high schools are examples of programs we use to promote safe and healthy environments. This year, we continued with our Empowering Parents series and had a summit in the fall in partnership with first responders and to discuss school safety and drug awareness. Our counseling team continued mental health minutes, which are quick videos that can be accessed on our website to provide information and resources for our students and parents on a variety of topics. Other preventative measures we take focus more on the operation side. We have fire and safety inspections conducted outside, by outside personnel and in-district personnel throughout the year to ensure our buildings are safe and to code. This year, the state is conducting intruder detection audits. And our campuses conduct weekly door audits to ensure campus doors are locked and secure. We use information from the audits and door checks to quickly fix building issues and retrain staff in if, in if issue was discovered that could have been prevented if all rules and practices were being followed. The next part is preparedness. We spend a lot of time, and most people don't see the time we spend on prevention and preparedness. Most people see what happens when an event occurs, but we spend a lot of time on prevention and preparedness. We work with our campuses to be prepared for any event. We use the standard response protocols. We practice and drill the protocols with our students and staff. Drills are conducted monthly, and each protocol is practiced at some point throughout the year on each campus. The drills allow the campus to identify areas that may be improved and help students and teachers prepare in the event of a real-life emergency. To help our students to continue to, to grow and be prepared during, to help our leaders to continue to grow and be prepared during meetings throughout the year, we use tabletop drills to talk through issues to ensure staff handle situations correctly. We practice and drill with first responders so, so we know how they were operate on our campuses and how, and they will know how we operate on our campuses. And we have taken the opportunity to allow first responders to use our facilities to, to practice within their departments to be, to be able to, to act quickly if there's an emergency on our campuses. The last three years, we have had safety and security, we've had a safety and security committee, another committee. The committee consists of trustees, Dr. Gearing, district and campus staff, parents, and first responders. The committee meets at least three times a year to review our safety plans and audits, look at the current and new safety strategies, review safety and security resources. And the time that the committee spends together with first responders is probably the most beneficial time. It allows us to build relationships with our first responders, our community, and allows our first responders to build partnerships with us. I'd like to thank Trish and Shad A. for, for serving on the committee and our first responders. I believe we've had five meetings this year, and we have another one coming up next week. And so it is time well spent to not only learn from our first responders, but also learn from each other as we, we build safe practices on our schools. The next phase is mitigation, another area we spend a lot of time on that you do not always get to see. It is important to ensure all of our safety and security systems are functioning properly to mitigate the loss of life, injuries, and property damage. Our plant service, ITS, and risk management teams work quickly and effectively to ensure all systems are working, and when there is an issue, the problems are addressed quickly. As the board knows, systems get old and outdated, and we have to constantly replace and repair systems. The Long Range Facilities Committee and CFAC are two important committees that are tasked with looking at our facilities and programs to ensure the district has resources, facilities, and systems to maintain a safe and secure schools. We all know early voting started this week, and Election Day is Saturday, May 6th, for the bond package. There are multiple items on the bond proposal to address safety and security items. A few items included on the bond proposals to address safety and security are resistant film on all of our door glass and windows in our entryways. Another item to address is to upgrade fencing around some of our facilities to make sure that it is at a certain height and less scalable to, to ensure people have more difficulty getting in. Another item is door locking hardware. It may be something that you don't always think about, but when we think about safety, time is a very important aspect of safety. And anytime we can help reduce time for anybody to, to act and react is, is essential. And so door locking hardware is some, is another item on, on bond, the bond package to ensure that all interior doors are, are always locked. It's something we practice in our facilities now. New and upgraded and additional cameras on all of our campuses. These are a few items, and there are many more. The next phase is response. This is the phase that most people see, and, and of course, we do use our, our standard response protocols, and, and we work closely with our first responders and get district staff to ensure that we are holding to our, our standard response protocols. The last phase is recovery. Once an incident occurs, we work with all parties to restore back to a sense of normalcy as quickly as possible. After each incident, we hold other act, after-action reviews to continuously improve. Safe space for our learners takes all of us to partner together, parents, students, and community. As we enter the last month of the school year, I would like to say that it truly does take the community, and you see anonymous alerts on there. It is very important, if you see something, you say something. Not sure, you may be surprised how often we address items by just someone saying something. Happened four times today. And so it is very important for everyone in our community to take safety, and it takes all of us and within the community. So as Kimberly mentioned, there, you know that you will be discussing the long-range plan later tonight. And as I mentioned, the CFAC and long-range plans are, are a part of the work that we do to look at our facilities and our programs. And so as part of the, the long-range plan discussion, you will be hearing the, the revisions and updates that were, have been discussed and the input that was given by the community and the, the changes to the, to the long-range plan and additional additions to the committee that will be discussed. So I'm not going to spend a lot, a lot of time on, on this slide since there is another presentation. So as you know, this was just an opportunity for, for the trustees to hear an update on the work that has occurred throughout the year. There will be an additional opportunity coming up to hear in more detail things that, that we have done throughout this year and data and perceptual data and other data that we could look, look at to ensure that we're meeting safe, the safety needs of our district, looking at innovation and inclusion. And of course, we will have, we all know the legislations meeting, you heard tonight, additional safety systems that we are looking to, to, to bring to the district as we continue to, to ensure our campuses are safe, and committees will continue to do the work. As I mentioned, and Jason mentioned with, with the committee he's working on, we are actively meeting and will continue to do work, and we're always looking for feedback to, to improve. Discussion.
Board members, any questions?
During citizens' comment, somebody said something about one of the Senate bills passing and that we'll get our security money. I just want to ask a question regarding our expectation of safety that's going to be state-mandated. Can you tell me, is the amount of money that they're going to give us going to cover what we absolutely need?
That's a hard question because I'm not a finance guy, but I will say that he, if, if there are, we know that there are 13, there are $13.5 million directly tied to safety and security on the bond proposal. I would say that that's actually probably closer to 15 million because of the bus cameras that is also on the bond proposal. We, we also know that within the legislation, they are looking at requiring armed security guards, security personnel on, on every campus. We, we spend, we are currently requesting $1.3 million in, in next year's budget just to pay for our current SROs that we have in the district. And so with knowing that what we are requesting and $100 for 42,000 students, I would say, in my opinion, there's not enough money being proposed by the legislature to meet the needs of our safety requirements. We've currently received, I believe, $350,000 for safety allotment. That doesn't cover two SROs, three SROs. So, so in my opinion, I would say no.
Would you be all right if we also, because I can hear a board member's request, we bring up Pete and?
Pete what knows way more than I do with the finance.
So if we can phone a friend. I do believe too, there's, there's some interesting conversations going on with that, that number. Correct me if I'm wrong, because as we said, there's conversations at different levels. So if you say you heard something in House Committee, well, did you go hear it in the Senate Committee too? And what'd you hear on the House floor? So there's several conversations. I think it's not just hardening either. I think there's been discussion of counselors as well, some components there. So Pete, can you let us know on the, the amount of what they're sending our way and what they think we need to do with all of that, and will it match?
Based on what's being proposed, or, but you're right. Basically, what John had mentioned earlier is just to, if we kept the same model that we had now with the SRO, and we were to expand those to the middle schools and elementary schools, that would, that would eat up the $100 per, all of our, the $4.2 million. It's probably a little bit more than that, actually. So anything above that is out of the district's pocket or out of bond funds. That's, that's not including the mental health services, if anything of that nature. It's not including any hardening of the facilities, more film on the, on the screens, cameras, et cetera, anything of that nature. So. So basically, just even what's high-level being talked about, just having the armed security guard, now assuming it's the S R O model, the hundred dollars per day wouldn't even cover that.
So technically, not an unfunded mandate, but pretty close.
How much for a single S R O?
It varies from law enforcement agency to law enforcement agency because we partner with three different, with three different agencies. But we're not just paying for the officer's salary. We are also have additional costs with equipment, vehicle, and stuff like that. So it's a little over a hundred thousand dollars per officer, roughly.
We provide the vehicle?
We do not, but part of our agreement is to help pay for the vehicle. It's standard practice.
Is that over a course of the life of the vehicle? I mean, how do they, they don't really calculate, they just send you a bill or send us a bill?
So it's, it's part of the M O U agreement that as part of each cost, they allocate this much money that will be included for vehicle use.
And that's roughly about a hundred thousand dollars. Is that for the nine-month school year or for the entire year?
It's for the school year.
Just the school year, so.
We have additional costs that we pay to use for law enforcement. That's not, that goes on top of our S R Os because we also have officers at games and events, but that's for the officers to be on our campuses during the school year.
Just for the public, so they'll be aware, how many campuses, if that law goes into effect, how many campuses do we have?
Currently with S R Os or currently?
Well, currently, I guess, currently, yes. How many do we have with S R Os?
Currently, we have seven campuses with S R Os.
Okay, so need an additional S R Os at how many other campuses?
That would be forty campuses.
So forty times a hundred thousand dollars each?
Four, about four million dollars as Pete.
About four million, okay. Thank you.
And it seems like the, when you come, when it comes to, say, the S R O funding, that's M and O. And what we're talking about here on the bond is I N S, which is more of the hardening. So the money that they will be providing, so far that we know of, seems to be, if, if that, if that armed guard requirement for every campus stays and passes, then it just looks like that the funding could pretty much just wipe or take care of quite a bit of the M and O requirement, but then we're still left with the I N S side of things.
That is correct, yes ma'am.
All right. Thank you, Pete. Board members, any other questions?
I had a question for John. You mentioned the Security Safety Committee, that there's parents on that committee. There's a lot of misinformation right now in our committee that board members appoint everyone to the committee. Can you just give us clarification to our parents at home on what that process is? I know we have a website dedicated to it, but can you explain that process, how y'all pick the parents to serve on this committee and it's not board-appointed?
It is, it is not board-appointed. The last opportunity when we asked for, request for parents is, I requested our principals provide input on parents to represent the entire school district. And based on their feedback, we reached out to parents to see if they would be willing to serve on the committee. We did say, of course, that it is a safety and security committee and we welcome people that have a background in that information to be able to provide support to us, but it's a request that I send out to our principals to ask for, for parent service.
I have a question, John. I don't know. This part says collecting perceptual survey data. What is that in reference to exactly?
So there's probably the biggest survey data that you will see that is perceptual is our, there's the one that we send out to our parents and our students to get feedback from them, but we also have our U T survey to get feedback from our staff. And so those surveys have been sent out and the information should be coming to the trustees soon on what the feedback we received from our parents, students, and staff.
Thank you.
And that's also on our website where we have all of our surveys, so you can go look all in one place, which, thank y'all so much for doing that. That makes it easier to track and find out what's going on out there. Board members, any other questions? I do have a question about just overall. I feel like the presentations, we're now at our last, is a lot of wonderful capacity building for trustees to see the amazing work that our staff is doing. There are, as we just talked about, number of campuses, number of students, and a number of personnel that were, y'all are doing an amazing job. And thank you for bringing that information to us, that helps us. I will kind of start as we, we go into our next phase, because I know later there'll be numbers, but there's this part of me, and maybe this isn't for other trustees, maybe this is just me, and trustees can help me out as we move forward in the discussions. When I look at our strategic plan, we have something called high-level strategies. And our high-level strategies are the things that are supposed to drive efforts in our focus areas. And in other words, we talked about, like, overall getting our plan together. We said if we tried to focus on twenty or thirty things, well, you're not, as a board, going to be able to keep your focus on twenty or thirty things. You need to focus on a few things really intentionally, do it really well, and then you'll see kind of that needle move. That was the thing, is what moves that needle? And so that's kind of where I'm going to start looking as we move along is, and I would love the board's thought, Dr. Gearing, our administration, if that is where you would look at for, as we continue to really look at, is are those the main areas we're saying if we do this, that makes the bigger system improvements that we're looking at as we go forward?
So I think we're going to process that a little bit and make sure that we understand the question carefully offline, if that's okay. But I think just a thought is that part of where the board focused their attention was through the superintendent evaluation, where we said, you know, for this year one, these are the things that we really want us to focus on. And that's why when we bring back the quarterly leading measures reports, I got it, I got it, the leading measures reports, those are focused on the superintendent evaluation, which, which is keeping us tight. We are trying to share in some of this, the work that's happening across the board, because even though we're tight in looking at outcomes in those areas, the work continues across the board. And so we're trying to just paint the picture of what the qualitative work looks like in these presentations.
That's tremendous. And I'll follow up with you offline too. I think that is exactly what I'm talking about, is we have these measures in our superintendent evaluation, but we talked about aligning it too, right? So we're going to see some of these measures kind of trickle out in our strategic plan. We're going to see some of these measures or these goals or these areas for improvement focus in our district improvement plan, which would go into site base, like they all kind of align. And so I'm just trying to look for those alignments of pieces as we're bringing stuff to a presentation. Can I see that pull-through all the way from our campus-based improvement plans to our district improvement plans through our strategic plan? Do we see where board input is really focusing on some of these main details to move that
Sorry, Bruce, where are you going to? I was just going to say, I, I feel like we're getting there and I, I, like what Bruce, Dr. Gearing was saying was his evaluation, I feel like the last time we had it, we really hit on as a board of what we wanted to see improved. And I do feel like we're getting those updates. I do see the alignment. I don't, I think what I'm waiting for is the final one when we get that final presentation, because I feel like for me, that's going to put all those little pieces. But for me, as a trustee, I mean, Dr. Gearing, I feel like has been very proactive. When we have a problem in regards to what we put in his evaluation or we want to see improvement, I feel like him and his administration have done a good job at aligning to what our strategic plan is, but also giving, they took board's input and improved on some of the processes that we wanted to see improve.
No, I agree. I think when I look at the high-level strategies, these impact statements we have that are going to drive focus, there's some of them like, well, what is this one actually doing? There's some that make perfect sense to me. In fact, I'll give you an example, for safe and innovative learning environments, our number one item board for high-level strategies is to update the long-range facility plan. And we're going to have more discussion tonight. I think that as we have those discussions, that is about moving that needle. And I can see that direct tie, tie on there. Maybe it might just be as we move forward, because this is our first strategic plan, maybe as we do the second one, maybe it's how we label high-level strategies, maybe there's another way to do that. But I'll keep watching as we go along to see how it all pulls through.
Just a reminder that we're not hitting all of those high-leverage strategies in year one, because some of those are going to get played out through, through the process. So that's why the superintendent evaluation honed in on what are the high-leverage strategies that we're attacking in year one. And there's very intentional alignment between all of those, the strategic plan, the superintendent evaluation, the district improvement plan, all the campus improvement plans. That's what we've been trying to pull the thread through in all of these presentations to you all year long, so.
All right. Well, if there are no other questions, we will close that agenda item. Board members, the next item up is Long Range Planning Committee. That looks to be like it might be a long agenda item, so if y'all are, yep, would like to go ahead, we'll take a ten-minute break. We'll come back at eight twenty-three.
All right. It is 8:26, and we are back in open session. We will go ahead and go to an update on our Long Range Planning Committee.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Gering. We are back tonight to talk more about the Long Range Plan and our Long Range Planning Committee. We do have some guests with us here tonight. We're very thankful that Melody Maples, Principal of Styles Middle School, and Dr. Clay Carrier, Senior Director of Innovative Learning Programs, Principal of New Hope High School, and Early College High School, and longest title in the district, has come to join us this evening. Both of these staff members are members of the Long Range Planning Committee. And so along with myself and Dr. Grissom, we are hopeful to be able to give you an update of where we are. We were here on March 23rd, kind of gave a history of the Long Range Plan. We talked about our committee was going to be expanding, and we would be bringing your information back. And so, just as we said, we are here tonight to do exactly that. And I'm actually going to give you all the clicks, yes, since you're doing most of that. You can go ahead, either way. But essentially, what we're here tonight to do is, again, just to give you an update on the committee, some opportunities to expand membership, and then to talk about the tenure plan document that has been updated based on recent community feedback.
Good evening, Board. So as you can see up here, these are the current committee members that are serving on the Long Range Planning Committee. So what you'll notice up here is we have a nice, healthy mix of a cross-section across the district. Obviously, we have some of our Board of Trustee members, along with our Board President on there. We have campus administration. If you look at that list, I'll save you the struggle of listening to my voice for that long, but you'll notice we have campus principals from every level, so elementary, middle, and high school. And if you look through our district administration list, you'll notice that we have a good cross-section across all departments. Now, we noticed that one of the departments that's currently missing, that will be added here shortly, is going to be business and finance, to make sure that everything's rounded out, so that all of our departments are working synchronously together on this. But I would like to say thank you to everybody who is currently attending and has helped this process over the last year, and is also assisting this process as we go into our next phase of what this committee will tackle.
So for those that may not remember, or may not have been part of the initial phases, this committee started as more of a purpose statement. And the purpose statement, or the goal, was basically create a tenure plan, and at least develop some structure to start from. And so now that that has done, what we've done is, we have met two times as an expanded committee of members. And the work has been about gathering feedback, having discussions, where we go from here. We had a fast-and-furious agenda tapped into Trish Bodie's timing of it. And we actually, during our April 17th meeting, it was very good, and we got a lot done. And so I might need some lessons. But during the last committee meeting, as we discussed and talked about certain things, we ended up developing, on April 17th, a charter. And so that way, we kind of know with this charter what our next steps will be from here as a committee going forward.
So something that's come up recently for discussion, and it's been a very positive item, is looking at some of those membership roles on the committee, and possibly expanding that out. We've heard that in these board meetings, we've heard that from community feedback. And so we definitely want to honor that and make sure that we get all voices heard on that. So, over time, and kind of this next leg of it is going to be including all these different groups that you see up here, students, parents, community members, campus and district staff trustees. And then the trustees will also have the option to be able to nominate a member as well. Now, the most important thing that I really want you to see on this slide is really that paragraph below. And so if you look on there on April 28th, and it will close on May 19th, we're going to have that application window open. So we want to make sure that everybody in the community is aware of this window, so that they would have an opportunity to go ahead and apply. Now, the link is also there, but I want to go ahead and urge something to everybody in the community, and make sure that you remember that being on a committee is not the only way to speak to a committee. We have lots of other channels to be able to gather that information. We have Let's Talk and some of our other front-facing district items that are on our district website. And in just a little bit, we'll talk about how we have directly incorporated the ability to provide feedback into this process on a slide here in just a second.
So what we discussed was, we are anticipating about selecting about 20 or so parents from the community, and then ultimately, we also felt very strongly about having students and student voice there, so we would like around approximately 10 students to serve on this Long Range Planning Committee. There'll be a blind review process. We want to make sure we could have a good representation from each of the feeder patterns in each of the areas as well. And those selected members will be notified the end of May, and serve for summer 2023, and throughout that next school year, and as well as the '24-'25 school year. We felt it really important, kind of bridging off of previous board meeting conversations about how we make sure that that work continues, and I would see that, those lows in some of those committee representations. Trustees will also be able to submit one nomination for a member to serve for one-year term. But they'll be able to nominate individuals for, the same individuals, for up to three years, if they so wish, or if at the end of that one-year term, maybe someone can't make that commitment continually, and so forth. I do want to reiterate to kind of what Mr. Carrier said, it is really important to our committee. We spend a lot of time talking about the ongoing feedback throughout that process, so that way we know we are tapped in to what people are saying. And so if you can't commit to being, for instance, part of this committee, we have built-in intentional opportunities for input, guidance, those kinds of things, to be provided to us, some of which we're going to talk about tonight as well here in a minute, where those opportunities are going to be. So if you can't commit to the committee, those opportunities will be there. If you don't get selected, those opportunities will be there.
So let's talk about what that's going to look like. So on April 17th, we met, and we took all the feedback that we had already gotten from the board meetings, again, any of the feedback that we had gotten from the community, the comments that were made during the board meeting, and all of that was originally presented at that April 17th meeting. So we did have everybody there, and then what we did is, we actually split everybody up into three groups, okay? And so what we made sure is that in each one of those groups, we had the committee member representation cross-section. So in every group, we had a board member, we had principals, and then we had district admin. And so then we were given a copy of the tenure plan, we looked over all the documents, and we said, okay, what's missing? What is unclear? What should we bring to the front? What can we adjust to this plan, such that we'll address some of the immediate feedback that we're currently sitting with, and get that implemented, and such that our community really feels plugged into this process? So a couple of highlights up here, and I'll just kind of walk you through it as we go through it. So first and foremost, we've already discussed that this is going to be a living document. And so if you look at the very bottom, it's hard to see in this picture, but I believe, board members, you've got the slides in front of you, it'll say that this document is actually a living document, and it's going to be adjusted based off community feedback, demographers' report, and other decisions within the district. Just so everybody understands that when you pull this up, this is going to be modified over time based off community feedback, and all of these other informational sources as we've done historically. Now, one of the things that you'll see added in the upright is, you'll see that click here to submit feedback button. That was something that we discussed across all three of the groups, and we felt that it was extremely important to make sure that somebody didn't have to dig around to be able to put in some feedback, because we want to limit any of those barriers, just to make sure we've gotten all community input. So this document, we talked about it on 4/17, and then on April 20th, that went live, community-facing, on our website. So tonight, if you're tuning in right now, and you have feedback that you'd like to apply, by all means, navigate, click the button, and fire away. Be happy to collect that data and start getting that implemented into the community, or into our Long Range Planning meetings, to make sure that we've got the community involvement there.
So one of the other things that we did at the April 17th meeting is, we kind of broke up into three subcommittees within this committee. We felt like there were several layers. Again, that community feedback up to this point was kind of guiding us towards these, and so we kind of conceptualized those layers of that feedback. And so one of the committees will be of Schools of Choice Policy Review and Development. Another is Considerations for Repurposing and Facility Optimization. And then we also came up with, how do we help inform our community better when we're talking and using some of these vocabulary words, or some of the language might be in a way that people are not quite aligned to, this is what this means, et cetera? Or do they want like School Finance 101 kind of concepts? And so that was just literally thrown out there as an idea, so they'd be more like community workshops, and an opportunity to garner as much information, but at that introductory level. We also talked about that, how can we maybe bridge off of, or leverage that partnership with other current district committees and the things that they're seeing, to help also create that? And so when we talked about that feedback from the community, specifically on the community workshop subcommittee, is, we would throw that out there to the community and say, what are those topics that you feel like you don't have just enough information on to be able to kind of follow along when these discussions are happening? And so they can help guide us towards what those workshops are that they would want.
So I'm going to jump in here real quick. Yesterday, we had a little hitch in the giddyup with some of the communication that has been going out. And so this is the Community Impact newspaper article that came out in the Lake Travis/Westlake edition. And Community Impact's been working closely with our team to do this communication over time. And this is a comprehensive story that kind of paints the picture all the way from the beginning of this process, all the way through where we are now. But it ends up being somewhat misleading, because it starts with this diagram, which is really what our initial take on repurposing was. And so before Dr. Grissom jumps into some of the repurposing conversations, we wanted to just point out that this is just part of the historical part of the story. So the Community Impact newspaper laid out what was initially said, but then it moves on in the body of the writing over here to talk about what has actually happened. And so initially here, you know, we talked about closing schools and repurposing entire facilities, but then they go on to tell the story of how we had community conversations, and we've said very clearly that we are not going to close schools if our communities don't want that. And that may look different across the district, and we've said that very clearly, but we just wanted to be very clear with the community and with the board, that, you know, we've made this commitment to not close schools if that's what the community wants, if they want to keep them open, and that we will look at repurposing parts of buildings, or wings of buildings, if that becomes available or necessary. But we maintain that commitment to not closing any of our schools in the district, if that's not what the community wants.
Okay. So I have the pleasure of leading the Subcommittee around Repurposing and Facility Optimization. And we know it is a hot topic, and so we started our work right away. So we, as you heard, we met as a whole group on April 17th. On April 19th, our Subcommittee was meeting to start this conversation. And really, it is a work in progress, because, one, we wanted to start defining, operationally defining, what does it mean to repurpose or have facility optimization? What does that actually mean? And then what are the considerations that we need to look at when we're in conversations around that? Also, what would trigger that particular conversation? What are the things that we would be tracking that would actually then prompt, okay, it's time to have this discussion? So we began drafting some of that, sent it out to the wider committee for conversation and feedback, but we know we need more voices at the table. You have heard tonight that we are expanding the Long Range Planning Committee to include parents and students and community members, and we definitely want their voice in this as well. So we are, it's an iteration, we're still working through that. We'll have more to share with you as we work through that process.
Before y'all leave that slide, since I was on the committee, I have a question, just something I've been noodling about as we're doing these iterations. And first of all, I just cannot say enough how much I appreciate all the voices and the attention. Cannot tell you, I agree, the stuff, the discussion on community impact was community engagement, getting involved, their voices, that was loud and clear in that committee meeting. But as we were talking about this repurposing, there was something I said in that meeting that I'm still kind of noodling as we go through some of these next steps. And one of the things we were talking about was, is that Long Range Plan kind of came about, I would see it, as when that bond failed, we said, okay, if the community's not saying this, then what are we going to do to reduce the number of facilities we need to build? That's the way I kind of saw those conversations happen with Long Range. I feel like, because of our discussions and with the community, we have repurposed, and Long Range isn't right now about what is the least amount of facilities we can build, but, given resources, what is it that you see us doing to address uneven growth? Are the dynamic growth, are the uneven growth in certain parts? And so I feel that discussion on facility and repurposing has changed, which also makes me feel like, actually, the overall charter of the Long Range Plan, like their mission has changed. And so as we continue these discussions, and we'll see where the board wants to go tonight with appetite, I just, I'm concerned, because I think if we keep building on those old assumptions, we're going to keep kind of running into ourselves a bit on some of that. I think we need to look at what our recent conversations have been with the community, and what does that mean when we're talking about that facility optimization repurpose? We're thinking a bit larger in scope. And actually, when I think about this, if I just said, okay, if you're looking solely at repurposing and facility, you know, that group, they'll either get $161 million to talk about how that repurposing looks, or you get existing resources. or you get existing resources, zero, but existing resources of whatever's available. But those two things also change that conversation. And so I'm just, I'm not sure we're yet capturing that. And I want to make sure as we just kind of move forward and we're going to have to keep doing iterations, that we're clear, clear as kind, on expectations of what results we're expecting to get as a board and to work on and what guidelines we're asking the community and the committee to work on.
All right. So we are not going into a lot of detail tonight about secondary attendance zoning, but it was a topic on our agenda for April 17th. So we just wanted to kind of update everyone. Again, we reviewed the recommendation report, which is scenario two, and then did an activity, a consensogram, where we looked at, did we find consensus with the fact that the scenario that would be presented to you on May 11th was aligned with the zoning charter and the long-range plan? April 20th, we then posted some additional information on the website. We heard through community forums that parents and students had questions about athletic eligibility information, sibling transfer exceptions, transfer exceptions in general. So we posted some additional information out there and are collecting that community feedback. And we'll be reviewing that before we bring that to you on May 11th. Again, not necessarily for board approval, but just as administrative guidelines that go with whatever scenario will be adopted by you. And so on May 11th, we'll be bringing that back to you for review and then discussion, and then ultimately approval on June 8th to be implemented in August of 2024. That's, we're not going into detail tonight, but Jimmy and I will be back on May 11th with a lot of information for you. So we do have another meeting of the Long Range Planning Committee next week. That will be our internal staff group for now. We'll be kind of following up on whatever feedback you have for us tonight. We'll be continuing the work of our subcommittees. And then June 6th, we'll be welcoming new members. That application, as Dr. Currier said, is going to open tomorrow. We'll be collecting those names. And then right before the week of Memorial Day, I think graduation week is when we'll notify people. And then June 6th, we'll welcome that larger group for the Long Range Planning Committee and just continue the work. Like Dr. Grissom said, it's never finished. It's an iterative process and we're just going to keep going. But that's where we are right now. Again, I wish I had answers to everyone's questions, but it's a work in progress.
And I know you've had questions, and so you all can weigh in. One of the discussions has been, we vote on the charter for the long range. Well, we voted on the charter for the attendance zoning. We voted on the charter for the bond oversight committee. We voted on the charter, I'm trying to remember all the different charters. We've been voting on several charters for our committees. Seems like recently, as our committees are rolling out, we're voting on those charters. So is that the board or where is our intention on having this charter voted on?
So I think the reason that we have not brought it to the board for a vote is our willingness and our intentionality in trying to keep this as fluid a process as possible. I think one of the things we've said about long-range planning is we were not bringing that long-range plan to the board for approval. I think the charter's a little different, so I have some mixed emotions about whether it should be board-approved or not. But I think our initial decision to not bring it to the board was this idea of being able to be flexible with it, to be able to listen to the community, to respond to some of the community asks that we've had in order to make sure that the Long Range Planning Committee works well, in order to bring, you know, flexibility to the long-range plan itself so that we can stay nimble as we try to navigate through these challenges. We don't have perfect answers along the way. And so we're trying to stay one step ahead and we're trying to listen really, really diligently to the community to make sure that we're doing what's best for the community, but also what's best for the institution as a whole as we go forward. So I think that's where we've landed. I'd love to hear more from board members about how they feel about the charter and board approval of that.
I think I don't see an issue with approving the charter. I don't see anything in there that is nailing the actual plan itself down to anything concrete. So there's nothing in there that would prevent the actual long-range plan from remaining a fluid, live document. But I do think it's important to have the charter approved because we do, we do that for all of the other committees. And I don't think this one should be an exception for that. There's, like I said, there's nothing in there, at least in this version. I don't know if this is the final draft or not. But there's nothing in here that would prevent the actual plan itself from remaining as what we have told the community it will be.
I mean, there are some concerns about the charter itself, so it might not be ready. From my perspective, there could be some more discussion needed on it before it's eventually approved. So yes, it might not, but it, and that can also affect how the actual plan is developed or refined over time. So I think both of them kind of just should be fluid for now.
I was thinking back today when the word charters kind of really started to be used. And I think when it was Corey Ryan was here with us and we were really looking at the zoning. And he was the one that really, it was for zoning that we started that charter. Since then, we have kind of transferred that charter over and tried to have a template that we use for all of our committees. So I think you're exactly right, Ms. Bodie. Some of those charters, specifically CFAC and anything to do with zoning and bond oversight are approved. But other templates on committees that where we have a charter aren't necessarily approved. So I do think there might be, maybe we could clearly define when it needs to come to the board, and maybe that would help. Because as I look at the list, like, you know, John mentioned earlier, the Safety and Security Committee kind of has its own charter, for lack of a right, that comes down and says, this group will run this. We have other groups on there, curriculum, community council. We have community-based accountability. So I think that's what's hard about it is there's not, we haven't clearly defined that yet. And we'd be happy to do that if that would help, maybe prevent some confusion going forward.
And I wonder if we're talking about, if the importance is keeping this as a living document, then, you know, how do we keep that communication going as a board? So when we're looking at the charter, if we have questions, is now then the time to ask those questions, right? And does that mean that y'all can then technically pivot immediately on that? I know I'm curious about our ratio, and y'all know I asked this as well, our ratio of administration to parents on the committee. I did some research on different types of committees that have similar type of functions throughout the state of Texas. And it seems like, you know, on the few that I could gather, and it's going to be more unique, I think, either to districts with some certain characteristics, either they're fast-growing or they're having this uneven growth. So that limits your field of research there. But as I was looking, it seems like we have, in those examples, some more parents. And I'm curious if you think, or maybe you haven't said it, but, you know, one of the things the Long Range Plan Committee did is they made a map with quadrants, right? And we have four quadrants. And I think, is there a way, because it seems like a lot of our long range deals with, like, this quadrant might have this need and this quadrant has this need. Is it taking committee members from each of those quadrants to make sure you have five from here, five from here, five from there? So you have that representation. And I don't see that. So to your point of being malleable or flexible, if we adopt a charter, do we need to have all those pieces in place? Or is that something we can go ahead and kind of quickly figure out now since we're trying to move quickly and get that community input back?
I have a question. Can you clarify the map you're referring to? Was that the A, B, C, D?
Mm-hmm.
I know in my group, we discussed that that really was kind of, we're not really using that anymore as a guidance because we've changed the long-range plan to what our, you know, depending upon the demographers report. And so in my group, we discussed that that map really was kind of like the starting point for us in 2022? Is that when we started? And I guess now that the committee has evolved, it was a starting point, but we're finding ourselves in a situation where we're seeing numbers fluctuate. And here's a great example. In January of 2021, I went back and watched this board meeting where Dr. Gearing had this whole wall of, that's where we've kind of kicked off the long-range plan. And at the beginning, we had elementary 30, 31, Running Brushy Creek. Is that right? Running Brushy. And I always call it wrong. Rancher Brushy Creek, sorry, guys. But at the time, the demographer report showed that. And as you see, we've kind of shifted now because we see that the massive growth is not really happening in that section. And so that's why that quadrant or that map was there. And so for our committee, we're kind of like pushing that out because now we kind of have a whole new direction, given the community input and where we're going with the demographers report. Does that make sense?
I think that goes back to us discussing that mission maybe has changed. We have a different, and so does there need to be some clarification in that? To your point, I was actually just trying to make it somewhat easier to make sure we get a good representation in different parts of the community on there. But if we want to do a few people from every single feeder pattern, the challenge we're going to have is if we're doing a feeder pattern selection, then you get, you're not going to at least get one elementary, one middle, one high school. So all of a sudden, you've changed your pool. So I was trying to figure out where could we go to any other type of structure that wasn't a feeder pattern? Because a feeder pattern will only get you very minimal voices spread across. And I know y'all don't want, I think when I was, you know, at our meeting, we said, you know, when you get like to a size of 70 or 100 people, you kind of lose some of that ability to move. And so when you're thinking about, you know, given the numbers you have, how do we select so we get a good representation of community that has all these various issues that the long-range plan group is going to be working with? And so, right, maybe not the map. I don't know if the feeder pattern's going to be the right way either, though.
What do we do for DEWIC and for our Equity Diversity Committee, the other district committees?
I was just fixing to mention DEWIC. So I'm following the process that Dr. Grissom started. But we do exactly this. In fact, the language came right from there. So we take all of the nominations and remove the names. And we ask people, why are you interested in serving? And have you served in other capacities? And get a little information on them. And then we look at, are they a parent, a community member, a student? Do they represent elementary, middle, high school, all levels? And which part of the district do they look at? And then we sort that out. And if we don't have particular areas represented, then we might go back out and ask you all as a trustee. Let's just say, for instance, all seven of you nominate individuals from one single feeder pattern. Then when we look at those review process, we may not accept other nominations from that feeder pattern if it's already represented by your nominations. So we might look at other areas. But we do our best to really try to keep it as representative as possible. You want to make sure you have families with incoming kindergartners and first graders in the conversations because these decisions will impact them. But you also want families in middle school and high school to be in the conversation. So really, just trying to represent it. You want community members and their business members, and most definitely, that student voice. So it's worked well at DEWIC. Sarah's done it for many years. So that was kind of our recommendation. Again, not ever having gone through this, I don't know that there's a magic number that is the perfect size for a district committee. But I can tell you, when it gets really large, it is harder to get that work done. And as Clay and Melody both mentioned, just because your name is not on a committee list does not mean you don't have an opportunity for input. We are planning sessions with our community to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to engage, even if there's not an exact seat for you on that particular committee. So we're going to try.
So I just have comments about the application process for the public. One of the things that we know is that, or we've experienced is the drop-off in attendance in committees. And so with the smaller number of 20, does that give any room for drop-off that's one? And then is your application going to indicate dates, times, expectations of attendance? And what happens when attendance starts to, or if attendance starts to drop off, like substituting members? And what was the last thing? Oh, similar to Trish's comment about people who are, or maybe specific elementary schools. There was the one that talked about elementary schools. So would there be like a committee that is really concentrated on those that could be affected? And they could be able to speak to the unique needs of their community as opposed to, I mean, other people can chime in and provide ideas, but usually the people who are closer to the projects might have, will probably want to drive that conversation.
Sure. So I'm going to start with your last question first and then work backwards. So I would say that right now, the way the larger committee is set up is in those three subcommittees. We can definitely change those. In fact, we wrote into the charter that the subcommittees would change based on need. So right now, the conversations have been driven around schools of choice. And if there's a policy development needed, the conversation that Dr. Grissom mentioned about repurposing and how do we really define facility optimization? And then what is a process and a structure that we can put in place to engage our community on a variety of topics? It might be outside of long-range planning. It could be a demography session. It could be finance. It could be construction costs. These are some of the things that have come up. But what is the actual structure that then the content could be placed in? So that's really what we're looking at. I would hope that whenever we got to a conversation about a particular school, that it would be outside of this committee and that then the district would be out in the community as we do with secondary zoning and saying, this particular decision will impact these areas. We'd love for those families to come forward and give us feedback on that. Rather than design the committee around specific topics that might happen, keep the committee at a higher level and keep those bigger concepts there. And then when specific incidences happen, we could address. So I hope that helps. The other question was about attendance. What we have written into the charter right now is that we're going to meet at least quarterly. I think until we bring all of the members on board, I don't want to say we're going to meet this day at this time in this location. I plan on June 6th for us actually having those conversations to talk about, is virtual better? Is in-person? Where do people want to meet? What time of day and what works for them? And then kind of let the committee drive it. I would say if there is a decision from the group that says you will have one attendance, if you miss one, you're out, or two, whatever the committee decides, we could easily go back in and update the charter to reflect that. But we've just kind of left it broad now, knowing that we are building and adding people and wanting to make sure that the new community members and parents and students that join us also have a voice in that. Like I said, right now, it's about 20 staff, give or take, campus and district represented. When we bring on all of the other members, there's probably another 30 to 35 people. So there will be more community and students and parents than there are staff on the committee. And we intentionally built it that way.
And so what is your thought then on how we pull? Are we pulling from a feeder pattern? Or what are y'all thinking? What other methods would you use?
So we can definitely look at that as we make sure that we have representation from all over the district. That is definitely a commitment of ours. So we can look at the quadrants. We can look at the feeder pattern. There's, through DEWIC and in that process, it has worked really well in being able to look at high school representation, middle, as well as elementary. But definitely, we'll take that feedback back and discuss and see, is there another way to think about it?
I have two things. One, just for my board members, on our board operating procedures this year, on page 21, we added under District Citizen Advisory Committees, the board reserves the right to replace committee members who miss more than two executive meetings. So we have that in our board operating procedures. And it does state, the administration will let us know if our picks have missed those two meetings. So we did approve that as board operating procedures this year. So that clears up that.
But that's for the ones we appoint. But what about community?
It's in here. It says community members. It says it, residents. It goes into detail on that. It does go into district community appointments, but it also goes into actual community members. Because I remember I was fighting for that. And then the other thing, I personally, y'all know I love charters. Those are my jam, because I love the structure that it brings. I personally like where we're started. I want to see what the committee, when we meet with the parents and students, and what their feedback looks like, and maybe get their opinion on what they feel like. I know it's not every, you feel like, Trish, maybe I don't want to speak for you, but I understand what you're saying, because I start thinking feeder patterns and given the current rezone that's presented, I don't have really, my feeder pattern's kind of messed up, right? And then I start thinking about early college, high school, and I start thinking about New Hope High School. Where do those students and community members and parents fit into? I personally would like to see us take this charter to our next big meeting and see if we need to expand on that. And, you know, if we feel like it's, we need more parents, then, I mean, we can do that. And that's the beauty of keep not approving this charter right now is expanding on it. And so I personally want to kind of go back to the committee, not with the parents and students, when we have a full committee, and kind of get their input on the charter, and then go from there.
Board members?
One last thing. So the, on the current committee members, I couldn't help but notice that I didn't see campus administrators in the central area. Did I miss something?
Yeah, we have Dr. Katie from Blockhouse Creek.
Sorry, I was thinking of Cedar Park, because it's, those three are Leander.
Do y'all mind like expanding on how those individuals? Hey, y'all are right there. How were y'all chosen for this committee?
That's exactly, yeah, that's exactly what we're going to say. So to kind of answer that question, you know, how did we end here, up here, right? So that was kind of a, kind of a all-call across all campus principals, and it was those that are, you know, able to have the time, be able to serve, those that add the interest. I'm sure there's others that are interested as well, but, you know, we got a lot of busy schedules, you know, depending upon especially middle and high school and those sort of things, plus family commitments. So these are the folks that stepped up to the plate, and I'm sure there'll be more to join us very soon.
I see two things that I'm still kind of noodling and struggling with as we move forward. And I can get behind the idea of giving the charter back to the committee. I actually think there's some brilliant people on there, and brilliance will join them hopefully, and so y'all can come up with some amazing things. One of the things is really that mission statement. I feel like the mission statement has changed. We're talking about all the differences. It should reflect that. Otherwise, the committee expectations, the community's going to expect the committee to do one thing. Maybe the committee expects they're doing something else, and the board's going to expect something different. It's really important to be all on the same page of these conversations of what exactly does this committee do? And the more I hear the conversations, I think maybe that repurpose facility optimization is one part of what that committee will do, not all of what that committee does. So that makes it harder for me when I'm trying to balance of like, what do other committees look like? Because what I did is, when I was going and looking at models, my models were mainly looking at a facility optimization type of focus, not all the pieces that we're talking about. So that facility optimization focus, I'm curious, how does that fit into this committee? And also, how do we make sure that that group who's working on repurpose and facility optimization, you know, you've already talked about some of those main things that were, you know, they're starting, like, when does it trigger? What are those data points that are needed? But I would argue that more importantly is to being realistic with expectations on that facility optimization. It looks one way in one discussion with the 161 million. It looks a different way in a different discussion with zero. Those are two different conversations. How does your charter reflect those two conversations? And really, is realistic with the community on what we want to do within the guidelines that we have, right? We talked about the community gives us the input in several different ways. We have one input way that's coming up, and then we have to work with what that input is. So I think that's important, that that's somewhere in the mission and in our repurpose discussion, so that when we get information back, there's something really tangible, and I get the board makes final decision, but tangible, that we can then take out to the community to have more conversations with. Because the community doesn't really like surprises, we know that. And surprise birthday parties are a thing when you're a kid, not as an adult, but really kind of that including part of like, not only are we seeing these changes that are happening, but realistically, are they ones that they can actually recommend and y'all can actually recommend and bring back? Because, you know, there could be a completely different innovative idea out there, but if it's not something we can realistically do, no matter how much time you research it and go study it, it's just not something we can do, so.
Thank you for that. We will definitely look at the charter again when we talk. I think when we, when we looked at the charter, we did exactly what you said, was in January of '22, it was very specific with bullet points. And when we talked about it now, we're looking at it again at a higher level. And one of the bullet points talks about utilizing the 10-year plan as a framework, meaning there might be parts of that that need to be discussed at certain times. Right now, repurposing is the part of the 10-year plan that is very much a focus of the community and needs definition and needs parameters around it. In a couple of years, it could be a rezoning again, right? That is also a component of the 10-year plan that needs to be discussed. And so that was kind of the goal with that bullet, was just saying, the 10-year plan's going to guide this, but along the way, there might be different components of it that need to be discussed, given the situation that arises, so. But I totally agree with you. When we originally wrote it, it was very specific about facility optimization, and we're realizing that now it might need to be other components of the plan, so. But we can definitely keep talking about it on May 3rd. May 3rd, yes, May 3rd.
And I, usually, when I see committees like this, I think that's more realistic to have trustees put two people each on there. But I also know that there's a need to get a wide variety of individuals and voices, and so I also don't want to restrict the work. So then my request is to please consider how we can add enough people, more people, where those voices really are going to be represented across some of the areas that we're working through.
So if I'm not mistaken, when we talked about the workshops, I think that's a prime opportunity with that shared learning in those workshops where those conversations happen. I see that kind of folding in. I don't know if that's kind of what you're meaning in terms of where those conversations and we bridge them in there.
And we can put as many, you can nominate, just let us know. Like I said, we were trying to systemize it and say that if every, if every committee you were asked to nominate, would it be easier to nominate one individual per committee and then be able to renew that person three times, knowing you're going to get a lot of committee requests from us? If you say we need two on long-range planning, we can easily adapt. That's not a problem.
Well, I have some concern about that. There's already 60 members on this committee. That's a lot of people to wrangle at one time to make effective decisions. And so I would caution us to keep that, that number limited somewhat, just because it becomes unwieldy after that.
I guess my challenge is, though, if the committee's doing three or four things, and that means you end up with 10 people or 20 people on repurpose, right? So they're not all going to be on that repurpose discussion that so many of our community has said, oh, I want to be a part of that discussion. So I'm not sure how that all ends up looking as we move forward.
Well, Trish, you know, we had talked about this. You and I have talked about this, and it was brought up when the repurposing, it was the Steiner Ranch principal, because she had talked about how her site-based planning committees have now turned into long-range plan discussions. And I was like, y'all are discussing that? But when you think about it, that is where our community are engaged, they're talking to the principal of the administration. You and I have had this conversation, is how to utilize your site-based committees and get that information. So I'd like to see how, I know we're doing a whole alignment with our district improvement plan and campus improvement plans, and how it's aligning with our strategic plan. So I feel like we have an opportunity to really tap into parent involvement and get it across the board, and utilize the parents we have there at the local level and have a great representation, but also like really give some power and some oomph to our site-based committees.
I think that's a really good comment about how they were talking about, there's lots of different ways to give feedback, and I think that's a great way to do it. The other thing we talked about was if each of us did two, that's an extra 14 people, which is a lot. So I think, I think seven was appropriate, plus the three of us that are on there, that's 10 that are, you know, board members or, or, you know, appointed. And that we wanted to make sure that the, those slots that were available go out to the community.
And, and I think, I mean, those are the exact reasons why I'm, I'm not asking for more yet. I think there's a part where, as a community, as the board of trustees and as administration, we're saying, we want this committee, though, to look different, and that we want to see something that is more powerful than we've seen in previous committees. We want to expand on that community engagement, that really being able to find solutions, that really being innovative. And so there's this interesting dance, too, where you're like, oh, okay, well, I just want to see, well, for me personally, I want to see tons of voices on there, right? But to y'all's point, we do have to be cautious about how we really can empower these individuals. And so when the committee gets too big, it gets unwieldy, and you're not going to be able to empower them. I, I'm struggling with that, but I understand that. I think the challenge is, how are we empowering you to make sure this committee looks different and dynamic? And, and going through our site-based committee, pulling in that community engagement piece, I think there's a lot of exciting work. I think then there's some of your community, and even myself, sometimes it's like, wait, is this committee just all, great, we're hoping for great things, and oh, never mind, we're just going to check a box and move on? And that's not what I'm seeing in this committee. I think it's important to keep building on that momentum, which is why I'm not saying we have to have two board members, or we have to vote on a charter if we keep that dynamic and we keep going back to that committee and we keep asking the community that's on the committee as we put them on there, what do y'all see this doing? So.
I just wanted to, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I was just going to say that as you were talking, it made me think about, how do we ensure robust feedback loops? Because any of these decisions should not be made in isolation within the committee, that we are taking things out, we are gathering feedback, and it's coming back for iteration, right? So that's what I'm thinking about. How do we clearly define that so that we make sure that we are getting a lot of community input and voice, but when we're having to really kind of make some final decisions, right, it's a smaller group, but then we take that back out, right? Just to be able to move the work forward. Just another way to think about, how do we ensure that wider community voice while still being able to move the work forward?
But then with the feedback, yes, people want to be able to give, give feedback, but some people also want to be there helping make those decisions, because they might, just making sure that their own perspective for their area, for their campus, is really being adapted to what they really want. And sometimes that might not come through very well in feedback, or they might feel like, oh, here we go again, they're still not listening to us. So it's still trying to make sure that that representation is, is solid there. And they can also help go back to the community and get that feedback.
Can I say the feedback loop on the map, that feedback button, is the beginning for me to show, like, that's a, that's a next step of community engagement? Now, if communities start seeing or hearing that that's actually being utilized, that we are reading it, that we are seeing it, that's the next step. And so I do see some innovative and really good things out of this group. I think it's, how does it translate into the community and the decisions that y'all bring back to the board? So I'm excited. I don't think we're done, and I do think there's more iteration needed. And I'm getting from the board that we're okay with not necessarily voting on a charter, but, but we would love for y'all to kind of dig a little deeper on this and, and get some more, some more things in place. And I would love to see managing expectations, just for what is that committee? What are we trying to accomplish realistically, and with what do we have to accomplish that? I'm hearing okay's up here, so cool. All right. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Been a lot of work. We're not done yet. That's what I'll keep saying. All right. We'll move on to the next item of our agenda, the Governance Audit Committee update. Shawde, as chair, we're going to let you kind of walk us through an internal audit update.
All right, so I'll start with just a recap of how we even got here in the first place. So about this time last year, Anna and I had, we were on the, were internal audit liaisons, working with our internal auditor here in the administration and, or the chief audit officer, and internal audit officer. And we did some research into what other school districts were doing and came up with some needs that would, would be, we would like to see in the district. And so, let's see, early this year, we lost our chief internal audit officer, and we've ramped up our efforts to outsource the entire function. And so as part of that, we did have Dr. Dupree here some, a couple of months ago, who talked about that process, because it's really an efficiency, trying to make sure that our systems or operations are efficient and not really looking for any gotchas or anything, but best practices being, best practices minimizing our risk. And so those were some of the, the objectives that we had in mind. And so the, we have an internal audit committee, so Anna and I continued, and we have our board president on that. And so we've met, and we've also engaged with Jamie Spiegel, who's the, who works in procurement. We've engaged with Sean and the policy team. And we looked at policies from, or Sean has looked at, with some direction, looked at policies from some other school districts and came up with one that the policy team has reviewed, and we gave him our feedback. So he's going to do a little bit more work on that. And as part of that, we, as a policy team, would also work on certain procedures that will go, that would work together with the policy. And right now, the procurement, we've had a, a draft of what an RFQ would look like that would go out to solicit bids, but it's not, we're just kind of working on those three parts together. The, the policy, the procedures, and then the RFQ and the soliciting. And the, the goal is to get all of that done and complete and approved and out and bids go out, get that done this summer, so that by the beginning of this next school year, we can have our outside auditors, internal auditors selected and ready to start work. And then we can determine as a board what we would like to, to have audited for the next school year. So if you have any input into the process, you can always contact me. If there's anything in particular you think you might like to see, you can talk about that, too, tonight. So that's just what's going on with internal audit.
Do you have anything else to add? Anybody have anything else to add? I would just say that we still have audit functionings happening. So like our financials, those are audited, that's a different process. We have other federal things that happen. Those are different audits. We're talking about an internal audit structure, so it's a different function. And so that is what we're, we're focusing on for this committee.
I just wanted to say thank you to Jamie Spiegel out there for helping us. We got the, the form to fill out, and it was quite the interesting form, but he's been really helpful in all of this and guiding us through this, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Shawde, thank you. Good update. All right. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, the Operations, Business, and Finance Monthly Reports.
Good evening, members of the board, Madam President, Superintendent Gearing. Tonight, we have our monthly reports. Reporting is not anything drastically different. We'll remind you of the report on there that states that our anticipated ending of year balances, our expenditures have actually been a little bit less throughout the spring. So we're looking at, I believe it's, I'm going off my mirror, I should have opened it up when I got here, I think we're looking at about $6 million of revenues exceeding expenditures. So that was, it's been a little different. I know we started out, I think last report was about $600,000. So it has, it's changed, so we're looking at that. So that's just something that's kind of, that is new or significantly different than last month. We'll go with that route. But other than that, we have the investment report, you have the monthly financials, tax collection report. If there are any questions, we weren't happy anything on those. I didn't see anything in those reports that were any different or dramatically different from the prior month.
And for recapture, so our first recapture amount was, do we have a final total?
Was or is or estimated at?
It will be, yeah.
Until, until the last day of school, you know, we get our attendance and everything actually finalized. The last number, I think I looked at was 53 million, 51, 53 million is what we were anticipating.
But we had started anticipating 36. So those estimates can still continue to, it sounds like they're just growing.
Unfortunately, I haven't reported any time of going down. It's always gone up, but.
All right.
No, it was, it was, no, it was 36 million based on the assumptions, and then as the number of our, our, our average daily attendance or enrollment was a little bit less than we had originally budgeted, and that, that pushed that up to the 50, 50, 51 million amount.
Okay.
Now, depending on what legislation passes next year, that amount could be significantly lower. lower. We ran some scenarios, but until I know what passes, we're not gonna throw numbers out there at this point.
Again, you might hear something in a Senate committee that says one thing, a House committee's gonna say something different. You gotta go.
Exactly. So just, we're on top of it, but we'll, you know, like everybody else, we're watching it, so.
Okay. Anything else, board members?
Need to do C2, the budget amendment.
I'm just not there yet. I'm waiting for us before we move on with this one. Okay. All right. Now we can move on to the Operations, consider approval of budget amendment.
We do have a budget amendment this evening. Is that what? You said budget amendment? Okay. Yeah, we do have a budget amendment this evening. We're moving, we're actually, we're trying to get a lot of these budget amendment or portions of these done, so we don't come at you with one at the end of June. So this is a little more clarity, just to kind of ease into it. We've actually, this is kind of where focusing on revenue. We are increasing our revenue about seven and a half million. 6.2 million of that is interest earnings. No surprise, interest rates are much higher than when we adopted the budget last year. And then 1.3 million increase for our SHARs, which is our Medicaid Special Education Services reimbursement program that we get through the federal government. However, we are also increasing our recapture budget amount by 9.3 million, so it's a net deficit of 1.8 million. We start with the, with the good news first on the revenue, and then we just take the rug out from under ya. But then we have a couple other, moving some monies around for some bus repairs, some SHARs cost report fees, the property taxes and state aid. But overall, all said and done, it all nets out to about a $1.8 million expenditures greater than revenues.
And board members, this is a great agenda item to review, as well as the other ones that Pete talked about, because when we're up at the legislature and we're talking about funds and expenses, this kind of gives you an idea of how, how those numbers impact our bottom line.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve the budget transfers and amendments to the 2022, 2023 budget as presented.
I second.
I have a motion from Anna, second from Christine. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays, motion carries. All right, board members, I will point out, there's a debrief item, and you'll notice certain board meeting improvements, such as we're trying to move the items that you are picking to consent agenda, trying to keep things streamlined between like our district committee discussions and board committee discussions. So please continue to fill out debrief. What is something we did well? What is something that you need us not to do anymore? All that good stuff. So it is 9:25, and for purposes permitted, we are going into closed session for purposes permitted by the Texas Government Code 551.071. Consultation with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation and our attorney-client privilege matter. Texas Government Code 551.074. Personnel deliberate the appointment, deliberate the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties of a public officer or employee. Texas Government Code 551.0821. Deliberation regarding matters whereby personally identifiable information regarding one or more students will be disclosed. And Texas Government Code 551.074. Deliberation and consideration of employment of Knowles Elementary School principal. There will be no action taken enclosed. We will come back out to open for any action. We are back in open session. Do I have a motion from closed?
I move that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of Alyssa Harris for principal at Knowles Elementary School. One-year probationary employment contract for personnel addition as presented in accordance with the salary scale policies and contract of Leander Independent School District for the 2023-2024 school year.
I second.
I have a motion from Francesca, second from Shawde. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays, motion carries. That is it for our closing session. So there are no other items in front of us. If there are no objections, we will adjourn at 9:49.